Everyone, I want to welcome you to the August fourteenth Cornwall Central School District, Board of Education meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that everyone stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I hope everyone is having an enjoyable, fun-filled, and refreshing, recharging summer. We have, I think, an agenda tonight that's going to be full of discussion. I know we have some very important action items as we get closer to the start of actual school session. So without further ado, we have a presentation first and foremost about getting ready for school from the Plumbow Group. So Terry, I'll turn it over to you to introduce, please.
All right. So these are two faces that are not strangers to our district. We have Scott and Lou from the Plumbow Group that were part of the planning process as we emerged from the successful vote from our community for our Capitol project. So we just are getting about a month away from the start of school. So we felt that this was a good time for the Plumbow Group to provide an update on where we are in our Capitol Project scope, Phase One, and plans for the next couple of weeks. So I'll turn it over to you, gentlemen.
Don't use the mic. Use the mic. Use the mic. Evening, everybody. My name is Scott Butler, the project manager for the Plumbow Group, and will give a little synopsis here of where we started with, where we currently are, and where we're headed. So a little bit about the agenda, we will go through the Phase One scope. They were affected by four buildings, Cornwall Elementary, Willow Avenue Elementary, Cornwall Middle School, and the high school. We have a couple of progress photos, status overview, and then a budget recap. A little bit acronyms as you go see, we have our locations. Our architect, as you know, was Tetra Tech, we're the Plumbow Group, and then, you know, general contractor, mechanical and plumbing, we're combined together, and then get electrical and then abatement contractor. So at the end of the day, there were four different entities amongst these buildings doing the work. Start with Cornwall Elementary, we also refer to as Lee Road. So the scopes of work was the hazardous abatement material. So it was back in the day, when the building was built, a lot of asbestos and/or lead materials were used in the construction of these old schools. So when we go ahead and we take these walls down, we encounter this insulation that needs to be abated under hazardous conditions. Then we go ahead and we redo both the first and second floor hallway bathrooms at the rear of the buildings. There's also a new exterior sanitary line. We abandoned the one inside the building, and we run a new one. We also have some classroom casework and sink replacements in first floor, second floor, and then a handful of the kindergarten classrooms, and then a new, Central Hudson provided secondary service to the existing switchgear. So this is kind of what we planned to accomplish here over the summer. Heading over to Willow, you kind of see a theme, it's a bathroom-based theme. So again, we have that hazardous abatement on all the material inside the bathrooms. Our goal was to go after the first, second, and third floor hallway bathrooms. There's a couple that we didn't touch, but these were the primary ones in the, adjacent to the, one of the stairwell corridors. We also were bringing stairwell handrails throughout the building up to code compliance, as well as a brand-new loading dock ramp and new shed-sloped enclosure around the existing slab for water protection, storage, and a little bit bigger fire, yeah, Egress access. We was also replacing various interior and exterior doors, as well as a more code-compliant auditorium Egress entrance to the building with hardening and security protection into the front office. Over at the middle school, again, with that hazardous abatement material, we also went to go replace the C, D, and E wing hallway bathrooms. Again, we have various interior and exterior doors, brick repointing and repairs on the exterior of the building, random places throughout, and then some, the only thing that we touched at the high school was for some exterior flashing at the canopy entrances. So a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing over at Lee Road, you can see on the left-hand side, that was a picture of the interior hazardous abatement. We go ahead and we protect all the classrooms while we remove, you know, the materials. In this case, it was the flooring adjacent to the casework that was removed. You can kind of see, you know, what it looks like, you know, post-abatement, you know, kind of redoing the flooring here. So that entire wall adjacent to the door, it had countertops, it had casework and attack boards, and it had some closets that were built in circa original to the building. So all that is currently being replaced. Little bit of an in-depth review of the demo operations here, again, at Lee Road. So the tile comes off the wall, we remove the median wall in between both the boys' and girls' bathrooms, so we can expose all the piping, kind of give you an idea of some of the stuff that would have been wrapped. So that's the stuff that we're removing under hazardous conditions, and then it all gets removed, and we're going to, brand-new sanitary lines, brand-new sink and toilet carriers, vent pipes, typical guts of the bathroom. A little bit about the sub-slab sewer replacements and exterior trenching. So again, we dig out, we dig out the old, we physically remove that, we put in the new, and then we prep. So this was just happened last week, so this is some of the new casework that we're installing. Again, so the orientation, for the most part, is still the same, we still have our base cabinets and our open shelf bookshelves, and then coat hooks and closets, and then we're still waiting for larger wardrobe-type cabinets that will infill the rest of the closet. And again, this is all on the first and second floor. Kindergarten isn't as predominant as there, we're just replacing the sink that was there. Jumping over to the middle school, very similar theme on the bathrooms, we go ahead and we've got the hazardous abatement within the bathrooms themselves, and then we go ahead and everything from the studs down, you know, straight down to the structural walls gets completely removed. We go ahead, we new studs, new plumbing, new electric, new HVAC exhaust fans, and then new finishes and fixtures. A little bit of a typical picture of some of the underslab removals and replacements, so all new underground sanitary. And then jumping over to Willow, very similar stuff, again, structural repairs, wet walls or the walls where all the toiletries, the plumbing will go behind, and that's for the, predominantly the second and third floor. So a little bit of status on where we stand today. So all the hazardous material was removed, in fact, that was moved a couple of weeks into the job, I'd say late July, that was all completed, even the additional found material, right? So a lot of old buildings, you can assume some stuff, but once you open up the walls and you really see what you're dealing with. All the demo locations are complete, so you kind of see, you know, studs and the skeleton of the bathrooms, and we've got various plumbing operations going on in a variety of the bathrooms. Classroom casework, like I showed you, the one, pretty much all the classrooms look finished such as that. Now we're just kind of waiting for the details, we've got some additional casework being delivered next week. We've got the sinks and then their tie-ins happening beginning of next week, so they're progressing along. Right now, we're working on all locations, with the exception of the high school, we're working extended hours, and we're on Saturdays. Ongoing work, so mostly right now, we are waiting on the electricians and the plumbers to finish all the work behind the bathroom walls, so that can get certified and tested, so that way we can start closing things up and really getting to what everyone else will finish seeing, is, you know, the ceilings and the tile. The loading dock, where we started on is the structural foundations with the goal of finishing the ramp prior to the start of school. The plan was always to build the building, the structure, the complex, the roof, you know, into the fall, coordinated with the school, whether it be second shift or weekends or things of that nature. That was always the plan, so we're on par there. And then various contractor change orders, so we've got a whole slide when it gets to the budget. Obstacles, so with any of these older buildings, there are always differing site conditions you're going in. We've done a lot of structural repairs, particularly at Willow, we have found a lot of additional hazardous material, particularly around the bathroom scope. We go ahead and we take the casework down, all being ADA compliant, some of the bathroom water supply lines and drains needed to be, you know, it kind of comes into the sinks at a certain angle, you know, from the rear of the sink, they were all in the way, so by the time, or by us getting into the details of getting that moved, bam, you find a bunch of additional hazardous material. We've all, as a team, made the decision to go ahead and mitigate that, remediate that, you know, that's the benefit of the school, benefit of the maintenance team, long-range, right? It's just kind of that unexpected, you know, scheduled bump. We get into the Central Hudson coordination for Lee Road, there's a secondary coming in, we're working through some Central Hudson-specific design considerations, so they've been a good ally, right, but a little bit of an obstacle at that point, because we're going ahead and re-scheming how it is that we want to come up with that plan. And then it's the post-COVID, nobody wants to talk about availability of material and manpower, right? As much as you don't want to talk about it, you know, it hasn't gone anywhere, by no means is it to the extent that it was, you know, three, four years ago, right? But it's got lingering effects, things that just, you know, aren't on Home Depot shelves, as an example, right? Something that you think that you can get from a supply house tomorrow takes two days, and so that kind of starts to lag and slow up a little bit. And then as is with, you know, summer work, specifically in the school industry, you know, you crew up with your resources come, you know, third or fourth week, and it's not like, you know, we're getting a wave of people to help finish, so that's why we are working extended hours, that's why we're working overtime, that's why we're working Saturdays, just to kind of fill in those labor gaps. We've also had to re-scheme, so with everything that we just talked about, and the original scope of what we thought we were going to go after the summer, so here's a slide of the stuff that we've kind of had to re-scheme and maybe push off-summer, not exactly off-scope, right, just not off-summer, right? So we're talking about redoing or re-scheming the Central Hudson secondary line, the loading dock structural, so again, we're talking about some structural scopes and potentially moving that to, you know, later date, holidays, things of that nature, all that stuff will end up being coordinated with the district. The Willow Avenue staircase handrails, you, code compliant, you know, you got to realize the design intent is to bring it up to a certain power level, you need to make sure that's spot-on, hundred percent, so there's submittal processes, review process, you know, field investigation processes. So that was something that we were hoping to accomplish over the summertime, not that doing it on, you know, Saturdays through the fall is obstruction, again, through coordination, we work through the team to make sure that we're, you know, we're taking all the proper precautions, and the building is available for us to do that, but, so that went from summer to weekend. Willow Avenue, second floor reception area with code-compliant auditorium, so you get into, like, the Willow Avenue and the age of the building, there's just lots of unnoticeable or unknown conditions, right? So with the condition of the building and where we've gone, you know, it was the team's decision not to overexert ourselves and open up more than we can put back, so we're going to really have to take a fine-tooth comb and plan out a good way to attack this in the fall, to make sure that, you know, we're getting what we paid for, but still keeping the building in an operational state. And then things that can be typically done after hours or on weekends would be, you know, flashing, exterior repairs. This is what really, everybody really cares about, right? So this is kind of a location-by-location map of where we currently stand in our projected product. Nine-one is the Friday before Labor Day weekend, and we are looking for the classrooms by the end of next week, this week being the week of the fourteenth, and the next week being the week of the twenty-first. So we're hoping to have classrooms completed by the time teachers come back, specifically at Lee Road, but we are looking at two turnover delays at Lee Road and the middle school, particularly the first floor, and the C wing, which with school starting on the fifth, we would be looking for that following weekend to be turned over. Now we would just convert into nights, it's not like we are waiting to the ninth, it's just, you know, the operation, the building gets turned over to the team and the admins and the students, right? So we turn in a second shift to finish what we need to. So now, as we continue on these next three weeks, you know, we're going to continue to work on all locations, extended hours and weekends, most likely double shift towards the tail end of this week, most definitely next week. The goal is to start installing finishes by the end of this week, that would be, you know, the tiles and the paint for the drywall, the stuff that everyone is proud to see when we're all done. We're prioritizing Willow Avenue right now, just to the count and quantity of bathrooms in that building, and we've taken out, you know, so many stalls, so many bathrooms, and then Lee Road, and then the middle school to follow. And then we're coordinating with team as everybody ramps up for their return, making sure that we're out of everyone's way, the building is in a condition for, you know, occupants to come back the week of the twenty-eighth, also, you know, storage and logistics, right? What does the school need? You know, how do we finish accomplishing what we've set out to do in a manner that everybody can work together for a safe turn to school? And then, last but not least, just kind of a status on budget. So this is what we originally set out to bid in the spring with their proposed contract values, and then where we currently are, and somewhat of a little quick blip as to, you know, reasons behind some potential change orders that we're tracking, between RFI processes, additional work, things of that nature, so we kind of get an idea. Some of these are inclusive of some allowances that are already in the contract, so that's something that, you know, when we start approving change orders with the board, right, it's we ask most contractors to carry an allowance set of money, kind of like an internal contingency in theirs, and we ask permission when we go to utilize that, right? So some of that stuff will start to draw down, but we're in the process of, you know, squaring up all those books and keeping an eye on the prize as far as our projection goes. We did anticipate a certain contingency allowance for the scope of work which we're within, even though that, you know, we found a lot of additional work, and you can kind of see, you know, where we've been spending the money is mostly on the additional found work, particularly at Lee Road and the classrooms. Questions, comments? That was kind of quick, but I think everyone's got a handout, I can pull any slide that we want to dive into a little bit further.
I have three questions. Anybody else has questions? Okay, I can start, okay. Three questions off your slides. One is, I noticed, like, you had a slide putting the high school and the middle school on the same kind of phase, I believe, abatement of hazardous material, and it's mainly piping insulation. I don't think there should be any in the high school, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's a new building.
So the only scope we had in Phase One, which was the summer of 2023, was some exterior flashing to the canopy?
Yeah.
That doesn't include...
Can we go to that slide, please?
That doesn't include the scope of work that we have in Phase Two, which will have some more lobby work?
Yeah, the high school, where it says "high school," slide, yeah, this one.
Yes.
Number one, abatement of hazardous material and piping, there shouldn't be anything, in my opinion, in high school.
That was at the middle school.
Middle school.
Middle school.
But they, okay, the title mixes it together.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Same question is Lee Road, again, if you can show the slide for Lee Road, please. Yeah, installing new Central Hudson service to an existing switchgear, how old is the existing switchgear?
Old. I don't have a date for you, but it's...
So are we sure that that's going to work?
Yes. So the existing switchgear and the cables running out to the existing transformers, when you go up to the, when you go up to the elementary school and you're facing the entrance to the building, over to your right, there's a utility pole with three very large transformers. The idea is to take those transformers off because of their age, bring them down to the ground with a new Central Hudson-provided transformer for better maintenance, better eyesight, better aesthetics, and then, you know, kind of replace the age of the transformer in future, not part of this Capitol project, but in future, I know the building condition survey will certainly address some more electrical upgrades.
There are some kind of, like, when you're talking about, like, an aging piece of equipment, I mean, if you want to connect with changing the connections, I mean, there's always, I believe, some risk involved, right? Whether it's compatible, not compatible works, capacities, whatever, I mean, you get on the technical side of things and electrical systems. So there's an electrical subcontractor, I believe, working on that, should be?
Yes, so one of our bid contracts was an electrical contractor, Fanshawe Electric, also known as Rockon Electric, they are our electrical prime contractor, certified doing all electrical work.
So they're very qualified to work on switchgear?
Yes.
And you mentioned, like, on somewhere else, like, there is a coordination going on with Central Hudson, so there's, because from the switchgear and beyond comes Central Hudson.
So we had our...
Like, demarcation lines, I mean, how do you know?
So we had our designer, you know, design what the design intent of, what the scope of work is, and then, right before summer started, we actually brought in Central Hudson, and we did a survey with them, this is what the design intent is, this is what we plan on doing, this is the schedule that we want to do it, and then we tie in their code-compliant or their, you know, site-specific requirements. One of the things being, you know, like, a new utility pole for the dropdown because of the condition of the old one, so we kind of work out those details, schedule that work.
Central Hudson, my understanding, they would, if they have any concerns with the work going on, they would let you know right away, they would...
And that was the reason between that coordination meeting, is to bring their area foreman or their supervision out and debrief our scope to make sure that things are compliant. We're doing things up to not only, you know, electrical standards, but their standards, so things would be acceptable, using some of their certified materials.
Okay. Thank you. My last thing, what got my attention, I mean, again, your awards, various change orders, what's the main cause, underlying cause, to have a lot, or you said various, like, why is that? I mean, a lot of changes, orders...
So...
Can be looked at, like, negatively, but positively, you know what I mean?
So when we're removing a lot of masonry walls, right? You can only be assumed that behind there, all the water lines are, you know, have hazardous material insulation. So when those walls are removed, then you can actually see the extent of what's behind the wall, so it's like unforeseen conditions, you're not going to do some probing in, you know, in a school, you're worried about disturbances, so there's some precautions that you just, you know, and that's why we carry allowances going into bid, because you assume that you're going to find some of that, it just happened to be at Lee Road a little bit more than we would have anticipated.
Okay. And you, again, one slide, you showed the cost of all these change orders put together, percentage-wise on the main bid, doesn't look like much, actually. One hundred forty thousand compared to four millions, right?
I would say that...
More than three percent. About three percent on four million is four thousand.
Yeah.
Or, or, quite, that, actually, industry standard's five percent, so when you look at how intrusive the work was, you know, you're very, we're in the core of your building, happens, we're in the core, we're tearing apart. So the fact that on, you know, four point two million dollars worth of work, right now, we're projected to be at one hundred and forty, we're in a really fantastic spot to look at where we could be, you know? You could be in a place where, I'm concerned, that, you're one thousand, at one forty, we're, again, industry standard, five percent or less, right now, we're at, we're hovering a little, that's impossible.
Did the award cover kind of these loads? Do you know anything about, like, the award itself? Did it have language regarding the change orders?
Yeah, the award of contract wasn't reviewed by the board event, it was the district personnel that reviewed the, reviewed that information.
Okay, how would the approval process, I mean, go, to approve, disapprove, whatever, I mean, here, going on?
It comes to the board, just like some of our other expenditure approvals, so it would come to the board.
Okay.
Most likely through the facilities committee first, and then to the board.
So we have language in the contract, you know, to pretty much proceed, proceed to finish, right? And then we've got reconciliations of what might be time and material costs, but any expenditures above and beyond the contract value, you know, will come with a recommendation from the architect and the construction manager to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you very much.
But on the heels of that, the notice to proceed is issued by the district itself, so it's not a surprise at the end, by the way, here's another, here's a hundred thousand dollars that, oh, no one knew about, but we did anyway. I assume Walter, someone's team from the district.
We've been having review meetings, right? These aren't newly found, and like, hey, let's just, let's just go for it, right? These are reviewed and agreed to, things that we need to move forward for, for the benefit of the district.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Christine?
Based on the schedule, what is the true likelihood about that nine-one, and what is the impact to the faculty and students for the nine-nine date? And is nine-nine, is nine-one, ninety-nine point nine percent sure we're going to get there, or is it, is there a risk?
We're prioritizing, right? We are to the point where we're starting to install finishes, not finishes, but infrastructure, right? We're still in the middle of that, let's say, at Willow Avenue, right, where we have almost all of our plumbers to try to knock that building out because it is such a priority. Once that is done, then it just turns into a finish game, which is why we talked about second shift. Willow's a must-have, right? So there's no not, so I would say Willow's probably on the scale of comfortably getting that, because we have to, and that's why we're being realistic on our resources, right? If we're making our commitments to other areas, right, something's got to give, because we don't have a flush of resources coming, right? So we prioritize based on conversations, whether it be first floor and the C wing being something. Now, that's not acceptable, right? So we're still going to push, right? We're just trying to be realistic on, you know, worst-case scenarios, right? And then try to beat them.
Yeah, we'd rather plan for that than be surprised.
Brendan? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John. So just to put a finer point on that most recent question from Christine, so if by nine-one, let's say, we're ninety-five percent done on a certain project and has to be kicked to nights and weekends, we would still, by your estimates, because we're prioritizing the most important things, we would, those would be far enough along where it would be fully operational, it's not going to, we're not going to have a contingency plan for limiting the activities in the building because of that.
For those particulars, right? We talk about nine-one, you know, flushable, partitions, you know, fire door, you know, completely usable, right? I mean, you know, are we talking about painting ceilings? Yes, it's on the list of things to do. Is that something that would keep us from being open? That could be a, you know, Tuesday, nine-five night shift, right? So we are prioritizing what will make us usable for those spaces.
Perfect, okay. And only other questions is just the, related to the items that were moved off the summer schedule. I recall back when we received a presentation in the spring, we had planned on having things on the nights and weekend schedule. My question is, are these in addition to things that were already planned to be completed during the school year, or was there just kind of like a blanket allowance, we're going to have to move some things off of the summer schedule into the weekend or into the school year? Just want to get a sense of, like, are these the items that we more or less anticipated doing during the school year, or are these in addition to them?
No, I think these were, so taking, like, we planned on doing the Central Hudson switchgear work, right, and for a variety of reasons, right? It just comes very apparent that if we make that commitment, we're going to overexert ourselves from the bathrooms, right, being a priority, right? So in that case, it is, it was a goal to finish over the summertime, now it is a, let's make sure the district is operational. make sure the district is operational, usable, that can, that can wait. So we're prioritizing that. The Willow Avenue second floor reception, right? It was a goal to finish that in the summertime, right? Due to operational and making sure that we open, right? We're gonna push that.
Sure, sure. So are there other, aside from these six items here, are there other items that we will be addressing during the school year?
No, because at that point, aside from the bathrooms, these are the remaining scope to finish.
And then it's everything else's scope too.
And then phase one is closed.
Phase two next summer, got it?
Yeah, and then what, what we'll do in the fall, right? Uh, phase two, not to jump into that, right, is up at SED, we will do a similar, you know, scope review, what's included, you know, what's the bid schedule, things of that nature. So everybody's kind of up to speed as we, as we walk through that cycle for the next academic year.
Sure, great, thank you.
Just to add, I think what's really important, when you look at number one, it's not just pushing, we are also looking at a better, so what was done would come with the, if you're existing, um, we're now looking at something that's gonna be actually a better design. So if the future, if you wanna have, for example, it's gonna be a better design. So it wasn't a push to just because of the manpower, it was because it was a better, a better design. When you look at the standard based on, you look at that building, old, old, when you come down at each post, the way the design was, who was designing around square post well, you have no name posts, you wanna do it. So we could easily just run in there, you wanna keep to the character, you have the reality, again, it takes a little more time. So right now, you have, there, you wanna make sure that what makes sense. When you look at the, both mine, we rest, Willow, Willow, when you start breaking up walls, how, you wanna make sure that we're not pushing. So there, there's a reason, we didn't just open up handle of blocks, uh, right now, and you always, uh, you're, you gotta figure out what's in there, what's, explore for it, have your time, and make sure that we're, exterior repairs, but it's still, again, the plan is exterior, and like, good to get, so, again, it wasn't just pushing on hand, I think, lots to, again, think more about.
Okay, thank you for that. Louis, thank Christian.
Yeah, so, um, it's important, what you just said, the Central Hudson angle, uh, to, when you do changes, to make sure you're thinking of the angles, not just to push it through, but to make sure it's the right decision for the district today and for our days moving forward, a hundred percent. And, um, to know, you talked about overages, I, I believe you're, you're kind of right on par with that, on that three percent number, under that five, that's, that's, that's where you wanna be. But, um, Scott, when, when you talk about these delays, nights and weekends and such, it sounds like there's not enough guys working. If we're, if we're, if we're not hitting our, if we're not killing overages, that means we're not, we, we have a handle, at least on the front end, of what we're gonna discover to, to the, the greatest extent we can. You break up a CMU wall, you have no choice but to say, oh, that's it, you could find a bag of money for all you know, you have no, you have, you have no idea. Let us know if you do, because we'll, we have a spot for it. But it sounds like you're, you're, you're missing, you're missing manpower. It sounds like you're, you're light on guys, if you're gonna.
And, and to that point, you're, you're, right now, I'm secondary, I can't look at it, right now, that's, so, and if I do pull that, it's probably worse than, I've been doing this twenty-six years, labor wise, worse than, as far as anyone, operators, you can't get put out, it's, it's been tough, really tough.
So I'll jump in and say, we're the ones holding the bag on that now. This board, this board is the ones that have to answer for a nine nine date where, so, let me clear, let me back up a second, go on the heels of Brendan's question, and ask it a little more directly. The bathrooms that you're all, you all are working on, will they be, all the bathrooms you're into, will they be operational when teachers arrive?
So when you look at Willow, when you look at this schedule, it really costs a lot, this is what it's getting.
Yeah.
So Willow, guy gets, again, all focus, you look at DSI, they've actually, a lot of, most of the resources are not all brought, well, so, so, profs can, can finish that. So that nine one is something, we're laying, we can get something to have. Lee Road, uh, when you look at Lee Road, classrooms, you know, casework and everything else, if that sink is operational for, for theirs, oh, that, when you look at eight twenty-six, we're still gonna be able to push, but when you look at person's second floor, second floor about to start, nine one, that, that gives us eight bathrooms, and also, we have a bunch of bathrooms that were not being touched, so it does put us in really strong position, good position, so that we can actually operate, and then nine nines, really, that second, that bathroom, puts you in a competitive, so that kids don't have to walk as far. But when you look at the way it's set up, it'll be able to, bathroom located, that nine nine eight, just, again, that's pushing, we're just pushing at it. And then the middle school, when you look at C wing, that's your, that's your core bathroom, and that's been hardest one because there's wall space on it. That's, that's the one that really said, that's gonna be the hardest to complete, but when you look at the evening, that are up and down, for each other, we complete those, and the guys get in it. The C wing, when you look at, that's the hardest, added the whole job, that's been hardest because it's confined space, and only certain guys will allow, like, confined space to work, you guys. So we could draw all sorts of manpower, and only some, on purpose, we said, let's pull out, let's get to blow up. And there was a contingency, if for some reason, if we don't, and or if we go, where we felt we'd be, we really had pricing and budget, volume. So we do have another.
So some of the facilities won't be o, open on the days teachers arrive? Okay. And what you said, the idea of a sink and some casework in a second grade classroom that they're bankrupt of for two days, I don't like it. I mean, you, we, you shouldn't take on more than you can chew in, 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 in a work cycle, but I think it's palatable, I think it's palatable. The idea of the bathrooms is, 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 is a hard swallow. Um, and you mentioned external facilities, I'm not sure if I, that's, that's gonna be a hard swallow as well.
Well, on purpose, that, well, that was, that's, we can.
Blue anywhere.
Uh, they go, again, if we didn't finish the first floor, we're still, the middle school, uh, began that C wing, and that bathroom there, if it, if you're walking, you're outside, seven, seven, you look at.
Yeah, 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 I know where you are. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a big bathroom, that's the one I work.
And you mentioned the contractor supplying, supplying external facilities if, if needed?
Right.
He's not looking for a change order for that? Okay. Yeah, they're, they're a little more focused now?
They're a lot.
Good, good. You, you noted, you noted, um, some of the large casework is ordered? Is there anything that else that's, that's critical path that is backordered or can't get your hands on, that's not on the quote unquote Home Depot shelf?
We, no, we're tracking everything. Uh, I think we're, our doors are expected at the end of this week, uh, we're, I think tile just came in a couple of days ago, we're, we're waiting on, um, those sinks, um, at some time this week for those classrooms. So everything is, is either in transit or I got our, our thumb on it, it's just getting it here.
Okay. Have the contractors, any of the subs or primes asked for additional time on contract? No, they're still, they're still anticipating that early September start. You're pushing.
Scott, because of, that's, we got, so, probably nine one, so, a lot happens, I'm saying, at great lengths, we're in a, we're in a strong position.
I appreciate it. Three, three weeks, double shifts, whatever, you know, nights and weekends, and nights and weekends, thank you.
Christian?
Um, so you've kind of answered my question, because it was about the bathrooms, and I'm a teacher, and, you know, so I know it's eight days between the ninth and the first, but that's really only three instructional days, um, I believe, in that first.
I think it's Tuesday through Friday, so it'd be four, four instructional days.
Tuesday is a conference day?
Not here.
Not here. Um, so, so four instructional days, that's what happens when a bathroom breaks down normally, you know, repairs, like if a bathroom broke down in the building that I teach at, it would be out maybe for that many days and you close down one. So I guess my question was, there are gonna be operational bathrooms in every building?
Yes.
On the first.
So, so that right here is the, the bathrooms at their projection, so the C wing would be, the, the C wing laboratories that we talked about, boys and girls, right? D wing would be available nine one, boys and girls.
Okay, and so none of these are teacher bathrooms, these are all student bathrooms that you work.
These are all student hallway bathrooms.
Right, so for the, the, on the first, that's, none of these bathrooms would be expected the teachers to be using. So like on the conference day on September, uh, September first?
Correct.
So I just wanted to clarify that, so.
I would, I would assume operationally, I don't know what is available to, to what faculty and staff, but.
So the other question about hazardous materials, I presume this is asbestos, is there anything else beyond that that was found?
It was primarily asbestos.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking down. Megan, you have a comment, question?
Just in a planning purpose, just a quick comment, I know it, at this point in the game, this might be really difficult to switch things around and you're dealing with underground and so on, but if you're looking at one student working bathroom at CES, the second floor is where our third and fourth graders are, whereas our first floor is where our kindergarten first and second grade is. So the independent factor of our third and fourth graders making their way downstairs is a lot better than our K one-two students making their way upstairs. So the management component in the first week of school is intense to start. If that's something that can be considered, I think it would be very well appreciated because that's a, that's a management with five, six, and seven year olds.
Understood.
I got a question for you. Who's your, who's your go-to in the district? Who's your go-to guy?
My, my point of contact?
Do you have any issues here, right, you know, on the job site and stuff like that? Is your go-to Walter?
Walter and Harvey.
Okay. And Walter, you report to, and that would be like a weekly report on what's going on? Monthly, how do you, how? I'm trying to understand how this is all happening here. I'm sorry.
Hey Walter, could you come up and grab a mic? Thank you.
So basically, what I'm getting at too, when, when it comes to the change of work orders, you would go to see Walter.
Collect, collectively, almost.
Right, and Walter would, would report that back to Mr. Dade, and then eventually that comes to the facilities, which comes to the board.
That's correct, so, so Scott and his field superintendents are housed in the training room at Buildings and Grounds. So I see them in the morning, uh, they arrive about a quarter to seven, so they're in and out all day long. I also make, uh, inspections of the buildings in the morning and we confer throughout the day. I have multiple conversations with Mr. Sotlin, three, four, seven times during the day. I'm also speaking with, uh, with Scott and having conference calls with our architect, trying to work through some of the problems and some of the things that were found that were unknown.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. I have a, a follow-up question. I, I appreciate what you all have answered, kind of closed the, the gaps I had. But going back to the bathrooms at the middle school, we're saying that the C wing, you anticipate to be available on the ninth. Do we have enough bathrooms without those available during those four days to house all the students in the building? Or is this idea of external facilities not just a possibility, but a necessity? I was hoping someone could address that.
So another element, um, that's gonna be in the mix is we will, uh, have our inspector come in and, um, peruse each of the sites, that's part of our, um, turning the buildings over for, um, student and staff occupancy. That's gonna occur next Wednesday, the twenty-third. Uh, so at that time, um, we've already done some work with the Plomo Group and our architects that count bathrooms and facilities, what is needed according, uh, to code, so we'll have the double check, uh, on the twenty-third at that time, um, and then look at the modular at the middle school and, and what's needed, um, to safely open, uh, for our students and staff.
Great, so it's on the, on the to-do list?
Correct.
And we'll know better?
The twenty-third.
By the twenty, or?
But in the meantime, Tetra Tech has already looked at the code required by, by New York and, and given us an initial report.
And the reason I bring this up is, it sounds like there's some, some latency or some lag time between what your material needs are and actually having them on site, right? This notion of just-in-time delivery is, is not working anymore, it sounds like, right? If it ever worked at all. But, but if it's, if we're looking for external facilities to accommodate for four days, I, we need to get a sense that they will be available when we need them, and that means that the necessary decision to get them needs to be earlier rather than later. And I think we're all in agreement.
We're.
Working, working towards that, so thank you for that. Perfect. My other question, Scott, I'll take you off the hook, thank you for your presentation. Terry, to you. When Scott was mentioning the nine one completion date of the classrooms, it dawned on me that these classrooms no longer look like the classrooms did when they, uh, had their last day of school, which was all beautified with all the teachers', um, paraphernalia. When do the teachers normally get in to refresh their rooms for the new school year? And does this schedule accommodate that?
So, uh, we have the dream team of Walter and company, uh, who's already on top of what needs to happen and backwards map, uh, to make sure all of our classrooms are, uh, ready to go for our staff. The principals of each building earlier today sent out a message to each staff of managing expectations, that we're in the midst of a capital project, so, um, the earliest that they would be able to enter the building would be, uh, the Monday prior to superintendent's conference day. Superintendent's conference day is the official start to the school year. Our teachers will tell you there's an unofficial start of when we wanna get into our buildings and start setting up our, our classrooms, so, um, on the twenty-fifth, uh, the principals will send out another update to their staffs, letting them know what next week might look like. Um, in our heads, there might be a rotation of staff coming in, depending on how far along Walter's team has gotten with, um, getting the, uh, classrooms and wings ready, depending on where we are with needed adjustments. There was a slide up there that was really important, the coordination that has to occur, occur between Walter and his team, so, um, to answer your question, the official start is nine one, um, but any teacher will tell you that, you know, if they have availability to come in and, and the time available that works with their family schedule, they do like to get in, uh, earlier, but, um, at this point, we've talked about managing expectations. We'll send out an email that Friday before and, and talk about what that staff week is gonna look like.
So, it sounds like flexibility is gonna be required on all hands to get through this challenge that we're facing right now, to include the teachers, because they're, they'll be affected too, from what they've normally been able to accomplish. Okay, thank you.
John? Just a question, so obviously, we, we as a board can't do anything with like putting in bathrooms, but we can do something perhaps with the schedule and. Just as a question. So obviously we as a board can't do anything with like putting in bathrooms, but we can do something perhaps with the schedule and, you know, there's logistics involved. So like my school district, the Tuesday is a superintendent's conference day as well. And I was wondering is, is it possible to explore perhaps maybe giving them an extra superintendent's conference day that Tuesday, so there's a little more time and the impact is less on the students and the teachers in that first week? I know that there's, that's a lot of different parts and there's schedules and things like that, so I'm not saying it's easy, but it might be something if we have time at this point to, to do that, if it's worth it.
So Terry, I, I don't know if we're in the brainstorming phase of this operation at this point or not, but this is new information. I, I'm not familiar with the, the normal course of things. What's your initial thought on that? I'm happy to entertain it. I just don't know. This is the part of the agenda that I want to entertain it at, if you know what I mean. Okay? So.
Yeah. To move a whole district a day off of schedule, I just, I'm not personally, as your superintendent, in favor of. That day from my conversations with the architects and Palumbo Group and Walter and his team, doesn't, it's, it's not worth a bang for, for the buck to delay that day. I know, and I'll tell you as a parent, I'm also ready to get my kids back in school on, on Tuesday as well. So if the indication was we need a day and that's what Palumbo Group was telling us, that that would really make a significant difference, but I'm not hearing that in all my conversations. So that's just my, my initial impression.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a clarifying question? How many classrooms are we talking about?
Twenty-nine.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's almost the entirety of Lee Road.
Okay, thanks.
And the classrooms will be ready. So the, the target date is, gives us a lot of question there. The really, the important question is, is the bathrooms and how far along those are. And then our inspector coming in and putting her eyes on it as well.
That photo, that photo is a, is a Friday afternoon photo. So a little bit of electrical work, throw the tack board in that, in that void in the left-hand photo, so. And then, and then as long as it takes to get unpacked, right, because those were full. That we get to do our, you know, do our courteous coordination to be respectful and get them in to do the things they need to do while maintaining, you know, momentum.
So it, so it sounds like as we move forward, the, the real challenge at the building level is going to be kind of room by room.
Bathroom by bathroom.
Oh, not the bathroom. Not, no, from the classroom perspective.
Twenty-sixth. So it's, I think it's the end of next week.
Yeah. So the important thing to understand is it's really not the work being done in the classrooms that's at issue. It's the coordinated effort of, the summertime is the best time for capital projects because no one should be in the building or the very few that are in there. We can manage and make sure that we're coordinating off. As soon as you let staff in and students in, it's a game changer. So as simple, something as simple as can't teachers just get into their classroom, that becomes a safety concern if we have people inside the walls and things of that nature. So our, our number one concern is safety. So it really is just that coordinated effort. So when I talk about that staff week, teachers and staff will be in the buildings. It just may not be a free-for-all that we've been used to, like Monday, come hither and set up wherever you want. Same thing with our PTOs. We're sending out nice reminders to our PTOs that the buildings may not be as accessible as they're used to. So it's really not the classrooms being ready by way of capital project. It's Walter's team needing the time to come in and do a summer's worth of work in a very condensed window. Which will happen. It just can't happen by that, that Monday before like we've been blessed with in past years.
Terry, just real quick, you said the inspector's coming. What, what inspector?
Maureen, can you answer that?
I don't know the name, but what, what should represent?
Walter couldn't cover that.
So a little, little back, background to capital projects. When we reach what's called substantial completion or a TCO, a temporary certificate of occupancy, we bring in our fire inspector, which is BOSI's. So Maureen Dougherty is our fire inspector coordinator and we've scheduled her to come in next week. Wednesday is the tentative date. Just to paint a little picture, and that's when Scott and his team will start demobilizing all the equipment supplies out of the building, doing their cleaning, clearing out the corridors, really cleaning up the buildings. And I'll walk through with the architect, with Scott and the inspector, and we walk through and make sure that the fire safety, everything is completed. So when the teachers and the students come back, we're all in compliance. One thing I, I want to mention to the board is our unsung heroes. It's our custodial workers. It's our maintenance folks. This summer has been extremely complex and challenging for them, so I really want to give them a shout-out as, as the leader of the department. Starting at Cornwall and Hudson, we had the extended school year program. That ended last Friday, so we had, that building was completely occupied. Also, we had summer school here. Over at Lee Road, we had both the Village and the Town Playground in the front of the building, coordinating with the Palumbo Group with the construction in the back. Willow Avenue was empty and the middle school was empty. I will tell you right now, all the classrooms are cleaned. Lee Road, they're putting back the furniture. We took staff from the high school and sent them to Lee Road. We are ahead of the game. These classrooms will be ready. In addition to that, our staff painted every classroom on the first and second floor of Lee Road this summer. So they all have a clean paint job. Took them about 12 days to do that. We're working with Scott and his team. So I am supporting the Palumbo Group. If anything, I would want to move that schedule up to create that sense of urgency for the contractors. We need these bathrooms. I'm confident that Scott will get the casework done, so the students and the teachers could have their classrooms. But these lavatories are very important. So if anything I could say to both Lou and Scott is just stay on top of these contractors. Let them know that Cornwall needs those lavatories and, and we need them for the first day of school. Thank you.
John, I have one more question.
Fast, then Richard.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Are we doing any commissioning?
Say that again?
Commissioning.
We do have some new heaters going into these bathrooms. So we will do the appropriate balancing and testing of those when they go installed, but there's no boilers or, or rooftop units or anything like that.
No heat vac at all, just plumbing?
Yeah, mostly plumbing.
Mostly plumbing, yeah. On the electrical side, I mean, no rewiring or?
Everything's new. Everything's new back to an existing panel.
Commissioning, basically. I mean, I would have to look back at the performance work statement and the award, the contract itself. I mean, commissioning should be the fundamental part of accepting delivery of the project before occupancy takes place.
So separate and aside from what the Palumbo Group is managing, we had an air conditioning capital project at the middle school, which is just coming to completion now. So they are commissioning the system now. The manufacturer has been on-site and I would estimate by next Monday, Tuesday, that's in full operation.
Even plumbing, I mean flushing every toilet. This is the whole process.
No, no, that's, that would be with the Palumbo and they would do that. And I'm sure they tested, you know, the, the domestic piping and the venting piping and all of that. The, the project that needs the commissioning would be the, for mechanical equipment, would be the air conditioning project. And, and that's the project that I'm managing, not the Palumbo Group.
Go, Richard.
All right, thank you. So I guess this question is for Terry and then maybe you guys. When are our open houses for parents in the buildings and will these delays impact those? Will the buildings be ready for the parents?
So Dragon Camp for the middle school is August 30th. I've already been in conversation with Ms. Palumbo and, and their team of how we make up contingency plans, communicate with families, et cetera. For kindergarten, Megan, can you remind me of the date?
I'm pulling it up now, but the kindergarten open house or the orientation is that for superintendent's conference day. And then open houses are typically about a week and a half to two weeks after the start of school. It's on the, just give me one second. I can't see it. Thank you. Yeah, so September 6th, it looks like they have open houses. It depends on what building, but yeah, it's, it's right after the start of school.
So everything will be good to go?
With flexibility, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That is the plan. All right. Lou, Scott, thank you for, for giving us an update. You know, there's a saying that bad news doesn't get better with age, so I appreciate you coming here and letting us know of the difficulty you're encountering. But like all things, once you've identified what the issue is, then you overcome it. And I'm confident that you guys will get all over it to, to make sure that the contractors get this thing done on the timeframe, the new timeframe that you've just established. So thank you for that. I have one request. Could you turn that projector off? Because it is blinding.
It is.
Yeah, great, great. Thank you. Walter, thank you for, for you adding, what you added. As a follow-up, I've written down, I'll talk to Terry about it later, but having a, a view of all the capital projects, not just the, the ones that we've externalized, but the ones that we're internalized would be, would be beneficial at some point, I think, at the fall. But we'll talk more about that. In terms of the, the staff, the unsung heroes that you illuminated, thank you for that. Please pass on to all of your team that we, as the board, appreciate their hard work. And I'm sure everyone's been a bit frustrated and if it's anything that, like what's happened at my house, you clean one room, you think you're done, and then a week later you come back and you realize you got to clean it again because of stuff happening. So please pass on their, our gratitude. Thank you. All right. With that, let's move on to the next part of our agenda, public comments. Please step up. I believe that microphone will be on. Please.
Hi all. I'm Cynthia Facillo. I'm a Cornwall resident and one of the founders and advocates of Universal Pre-Kindergarten. I come here to basically, thank you for standing with me. I came here basically to just remind, to please add Universal Pre-Kindergarten as a goal, to continue the expansion into this year and into 2024, 2025. As Terry Dade knows, we now have, hm? Twenty, we now currently have 80 slots, so we are looking to continue to see the growth and expansion of this amazing program that has impacted every single one of us positively, as you can see by my little one. She is very involved. So I'd like to see the continuation of that program. As she goes into Lee Road, we're going to see more parents take that over and that's going to be nice for me, as well as for the other parents to see this continue to grow. The second reason I'm here besides the adding of that goal to the agenda is the park at Lee Road. I was hoping to bring it to the plate because the PTO has brought it to our attention, that they would like to see, or we all would like to see the Lee Road Park updated, the Cornwall Elementary School. I guess the biggest question was the company that the school district would like to use to continue this progression and this updating of the park. If we could get that information, we could actually get the information, get the estimate, talk to the senator, and then go from there. But the PTO wants, is hoping for that information, so maybe someone from the board could reach out to one of the parents. I'm not personally on the PTO, but hopefully we can get the information maybe next week. So that's kind of the goal for us as a group. I want to thank the board for your time and commitment to the parents and the residents of Cornwall. So that's basically the question and that's pretty much it. If we can get an email about the information for the company, we can kind of start moving forward. Yes, honey, you want to say something?
This one's better. Thank you. You too. Uh, I'm sorry. I did that.
My name is Brandon Calori. I'm actually in Woodbury. I was not able to meet the, make the last meeting when everyone got sworn in, so I was on vacation. And then when we came back, I worked for the town of Cornwall, so you know what we've been doing for the past month. We've been very busy. But the work is rewarding and we're getting a lot of stuff done. So as I said, my name is Brandon Calori. I come before you today to introduce myself and also congratulate everyone on the recent elections. With those elections behind us and a new school year approaching, I know there's a lot of work to be done. I am a Woodbury Town Councilman and I am the liaison to Cornwall Central School District. I also work for the town of Cornwall Highway Department. We're on the president of CSCA, Local 836, Unit 7924. I'd also like to mention that my children go to school here in Cornwall. We are one of 455 houses in Woodbury whose children attend CCSD. I have a daughter in high school and my son is in elementary school. I understand the importance of a good education and I'm proud of my children and their academic achievements. I also understand the importance of community and volunteerism. Like Cornwall, Woodbury is always looking for volunteers. It's my hope to work with the Board of Education and the district to offer volunteer opportunities to our children. Opportunities like Woodbury's Community Ambulance, where one can start their love of helping others at the age of 16. Or if they live in Woodbury, they may also join our fire department as a junior member at 16. We also have regular volunteer opportunities at our parks and libraries and other community organizations in our town. These opportunities will help students fulfill their high school requirements and give them a prideful sense of helping their community. It's my hope, working with this board, to be able to inform the students here at CCSD of these volunteer opportunities. In conclusion, I very much would like to work with this Board of Education on new and fresh ideas to connect our two towns in more ways than just Route 32. With your permission, I'd like to give you guys a few of my town council business cards, so my email's on it. You can contact me or just go to the town of Woodbury site. And I'd like to thank you for listening and I hope to hear from you all soon. Okay? Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Hello. I'm just standing on my tiptoes. My name's Joelle Aguilar. I am a community member, parent. My two boys, or my one boy went to school here. My youngest one still goes to school here. And I'm also a teacher at Lee Road. First of all, I just want to thank Mrs. Argenio for pointing out the issue with the bathrooms down on the first floor, because my classroom is down on the first floor in Lee Road. I have a kindergarten classroom. I'm the only kindergarten classroom that's down on the first floor. And it, it would be a challenge for the little ones, not just mine, but the first and the second graders. And there's, I also want to point out, there's two special ed classes that are downstairs on the first floor. That would make it a little tricky, I'll say, to go up to that second floor. But just to piggyback on what she said, just to make everybody aware, there would be approximately 22, 23, 24 classrooms, all sharing. there would be approximately 22, 23, 24 classrooms, all sharing one bathroom upstairs for approximately eight days, if that timetable that the Palumbo Group gave. I can't personally see that many children using one set of girls' bathrooms and one set of boys' bathrooms, even though they are renovated. There is also one single girls' bathroom and one single boys' bathroom that's up near the cafeteria by the gym. I don't know if those are by the gym. I don't know if those are being renovated, but they are single bathrooms. The rest are adult bathrooms, so the children would not be allowed to use those, to my knowledge. The other thing I do want to point out is, although I'm super excited about the 8/26 start date, the classrooms, every teacher had to pack up the entire contents of their classrooms. So every single thing that I use in my classroom is in a cardboard box that has to be then unpacked, starting on August 26th, on a rotating basis. So if I can get into my classroom maybe one to two days or three days before that 9/1 start date, I don't really know. Luckily, I have a teaching assistant. But most, 99% of the other teachers do not have a teaching assistant that can help them unpack and put their classrooms back together, in addition to then preparing for the kids coming into the building, whether it be making photocopies, getting their lessons ready, getting, you know, the desks ready to, you know, with the kids' names plates on them, what have you. All those like tiny little things that teachers do in order to be ready for the kids. And I understand we have to be flexible, the parents have to be flexible. Flexibility is the name of the game. But I also know what the expectations are in this school district from parents. And with our open house on the second day of school, I, I can't honestly say if my classroom is gonna be ready. Parents are just gonna have to come in and if there's boxes sitting around, then oh well, boxes are going to be sitting around. There's really, I mean, I have no control over the, the construction, nor does any other teacher in the school district have control over that. So I just want to point out to the board that if you are being flexible and we're being flexible, then we have to make sure that the community understands that they have to be flexible if there are still boxes sitting around our classrooms. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me? Welcome to the new board members and congratulations on your election. And thank you for serving, all of you. So I wrote to Mr. Edelen last night regarding the code of conduct. So I just wanted to read that, just for the public record. It shouldn't take too long. So I was writing with regard to the draft code of conduct. I reviewed the document and was surprised to see the changes made to the dress code. I was already concerned about the lack of enforcement of the dress code policy at the middle school specifically, where I've seen girls as young as 10 and 11 wearing extremely revealing and provocative clothing. It was my intention to bring this issue to the board's attention so you could consider better ways for the school personnel to enforce the existing dress code. As the code rightfully states, I think, in my view, "Teachers and all other district personnel should exemplify and reinforce acceptable student dress and help students develop an understanding of appropriate appearance in a school setting." So crop tops and shorts that expose the buttocks are clearly not appropriate in a school setting, creating, I think, unwelcome distractions for many students and no doubt many adults as well. Yet I found upon review of the updated document that the dress code has been made less stringent and more permissive. The section that specifically banned revealing tops and bottoms has been removed. The relevant section reads, "A student's dress and appearance shall not include garments such as tube tops, net tops, halter tops, spaghetti straps, plunging necklines, and see-through garments. Ensure the undergarments are completely covered with outer clothing. It should not include the wearing of skirts, dresses, shorts, or scorts that are higher than mid-thigh." And that's the end of the section. These restrictions, I think, are perfectly reasonable and removing them in effect sends a message that wearing such clothing is acceptable in a school setting. My question is, why would the school seek to make a laxer dress code policy? It suggests to me that rather than find ways to enforce an appropriately restrictive policy, the school's opting to make the policy less restrictive to make, well, just to avoid the problem of enforcement altogether. I would hope the board would see the problem with this approach. It doesn't put the interests of the students first and doesn't aim for an optimal learning environment. So I'd like the board to consider retaining the original language of the dress code and work with administrators on finding ways to better enforce it. And I should say, the reason this matters to me is that I have a child in the middle school, a daughter, and then a rising fifth grader and a fourth grade son. So my older daughter, I think, had, she struggled with her peers dressing this way and feeling the pressure to dress that way too, which, you know, we found objectionable. And she feels that way as well. She felt like it's really objectifying to dress that way, but that peer pressure is there and I just wish she didn't have to face it. And then for my son, I really worry, obviously he will struggle for different reasons and I just don't see why we have to put our kids in that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Hi, I'm Lori Beth Palliata. Live in Cornwall in Hudson. I have, in our district, a incoming kindergartner, fourth grade and fifth grade. I also have concerns and questions about our updated dress code at the middle school, is what I'm referring to. Quite a few items have been taken out, but nothing has been added to replace them. I would like to understand why and the thought process around that decision. With a daughter entering fifth grade, I need to know what to expect, as does she. There is a section of the dress code that says, "Any garments which expose to sight the private parts of the body." I have to ask, is this, is the buttocks considered a private area and our breasts considered a private area? It feels uncomfortable to even have to say that, but I, I need to know. Because I, I do see the trends right now. Especially, you know, they're, the shorts are like super short and, you know, we're just, we need to know what, what, what we're gonna be seeing. My daughter is also very uncomfortable when she sees other people's bodies in this way. By taking out the section saying, "Undergarments need to be completely covered by clothes", are you saying that bras and underwear are sufficient enough to be worn with nothing covering them? I know there's a lot of girls that wear sports bras as shirts or just wear them. And I think that there are places where that is appropriate and fine. And I, I also feel that in the school, it is, it's not appropriate. And I just wanted to know where we as a, as a district stood on that. It's also important for, I believe, the teachers to have a leg to stand on in their classrooms. They need to have backup from administration. I've, I've heard that some teachers do find certain clothing to be, you know, not, not appropriate and they do send the children to administration. And from what I've understood is that they're sent back and with no, no changes or anything. So I just wanted to know how we are going to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori Beth. Anyone else? Okay, so that then takes us to the next part of the agenda, which is reports. And let's start with the superintendent's update. Terry?
Thank you, John. So for my update, I just wanted to review publicly my draft goals for the 2324 school year. This was provided to the board last week. So goal number one is establishment of a CCSD Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, representative of all stakeholders, including students. The superintendent will partner with this committee to develop and implement policy, professional development and practices that support success for all students. So a few pieces with this goal. Rather than it seeming like decisions coming from me, I felt that it was really important to broaden that perspective and really bring in our teachers and staff, our parents and our students to talk about their lived experience here in the Cornwall Central School District and what we can do to support every single child that walks through the doors of any of our school buildings in the district. So this committee's purpose, one, if you were to do a query in our policies to search for the words diversity, equity, and/or inclusion, you would hit a, a zero hits in our policies. We find it in our code of conduct, but we do not have a policy in support of diversity efforts in the Cornwall Central School District. So I would lean on our parents and our teachers and staff and our students, most importantly, to help us craft a potential policy for the district that would then run the, the standard, go through the policy committee and then to the board for review and approval. The other pieces is just thinking of the professional development that our staff would like to see with regards to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then what are our students looking for in the classroom, in our buildings? What are our parents looking for to have a welcoming environment for each and every family? So big goal, but something I'm excited to undertake in partnership with our stakeholders. Goal number two, continue our district's transition to a one-to-one school district with a focus on enhancing instructional strategies to increase student collaboration engagement through the use of integrated technology within the classroom. So I've talked for the past three years that the devices are the easy part of going one-to-one in a school district. What really is the proof in the pudding is seeing a change in the way our, our students are interacting with technology in support of their learning. So this was partial goal last year, but I wasn't able to really implement and enforce it because of, we weren't a full one-to-one device-wise for the district. Next year, we will be. So we'll really be looking at professional development, review of instructional strategies and, and how our students are interacting with technology to enhance their engagement in the classroom. And goal number three, advance the academic opportunities at all three levels with a focus on K-4 guided reading, the first full year of implementation of the K-5 Next Generation Science Standards, and an expansion of high school course offerings. So the guided reading piece of that goal is really, there's been ongoing professional development at our elementary grade levels for the instruction of reading with a focus on guided reading. This is the year that we're really looking for that full implementation in, in our classroom instruction. Same goes with the Next Gen Science Standards. We've provided a lot of professional development through the use of OU BOCs and in-house. So this will be the first full year. And then expansion of high school course offerings, we're looking at, this is year, going into year three of us exploring the potential for a drop-rotation schedule at the high school level, which would expand and opportunities for students to take an additional course. We have some extremely talented and ambitious students who were taking, who didn't have room in their schedule and were missing lunch to be able to take another course. So they were eating while they were taking an additional course that they wanted for their university and, and college application process. Also at the AP level, at the support level, this would do quite a bit. So again, we're still in the planning stages. There's a lot of work to do, but we're excited about tackling that as, as a support for our students at the high school level.
Thank you, Terry. This is a discussion part. It might be helpful, Terry, if we, we talk about the process first, just to get everyone on the same sheet of music here. So, so you're proposing these goals for, for the year. The, the, I think, not to, to move forward, but next week, Monday night, we're actually going to have Mark Schneider from, from NISBA, who's part of their board leadership and development team, give us some training, board members. And part of the offerings that I sent out, you'll see the board's role in diversity, inclusion, and, and equity. So there, there seems to be like recognition that there's stuff to be done. Now it's just a matter of us kind of taking that piece of wood and whittling it down to something that's, that's attractive and, and useful for, for, for all of us. So as an example, this is just the start of a, of a conversation to arrive at what ultimately the goals for, for, for Terry, as well as the board, board goals and the goals of the district will be. We're not gonna do that tonight. I think what we're doing tonight is providing Terry feedback. And given the, the hour of the evening, I'm wondering if, instead of doing it at this session, if people would be willing to defer that. Or if you feel compelled, please feel free to do it in this session right now. But, but wait till we listen to, to Mark Schneider about what NISBA, to get us all on the same sheet of music, is. Not just in terms of DIE, but, but, but more importantly about the whole goal-setting process. Because we're, that's part of the training as well, right? So, so, so if we're, if we're gonna do it, I'd, I'd rather us see what the leading practice and the standard is first, knowing that Terry has some needs. He, he needs our help. And that we can best do that once we understand where we want to go as a board and then arrive at that approval process. So, so I just throw that out there. I know it's a long way of saying, hey, we, we, this is a little bit too early to, to, to really move on. But if you wanna ask Terry questions, please feel free. Because this is very, I think, valuable feedback in the discussion. Bass, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, John. I, I do remember last year, we looked at the code of conduct, I think, a few days, if not maybe a week before the start of the school. And I raise point that that was not enough time for us to review, to discuss it, to debate it. And we had to approve because you can't, Terry, start the school year without a code of conduct that's approved by the board. That's what happened last year. And my understanding is like, now you give us enough time to debate it, to, to talk about it, which I appreciate. So that's kind of like my, 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 my general kind of sense of what's going on. But of course, as a board, we need to, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about, maybe I'm mixing two things together. You're talking about the code of conduct or you're talking about the goals, right?
So we're, we're looking at the, the goals that Terry has drafted and just provided us for, for basically comment.
Right. Two things I felt like kind of rushed last year. I mean, the code of conduct and, and the, the superintendent's goals. And I think this is kind of appropriate time for us to, to discuss. I mean, we're, we're gonna come to the code, code of conduct later.
That's later in the agenda, yes.
For the, for the goals, I do have a few points, I mean, I can make if, you like, are you suggesting we should delay that? Or, I mean?
Well, we're gonna be meeting next week on Monday.
Okay.
And it might be a, a, a more beneficial time to, to provide comments.
Okay.
But if you have an initial thought that you'd like to share, your initial reaction, please feel free to share that.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate that. One more reason, maybe I should talk tonight because next week I wouldn't be able to attend. I mean, I'm, I would be in Canada. Okay, so- Okay, so I saw the, like, my comments on the goals. I see number one is DEI, as it was last year. It is very important. And I do appreciate the fact that Terry is suggesting to include stakeholders. Rather, he worded it perfectly. Rather than taking upon himself to do the whole thing, he wants to include more stakeholders. Thumbs up. I mean, I totally support that. To proceed to the procedure, you mentioned procedures, John, and you're right. Kind of, I mean, there's a committee suggested to be formed, including students, kind of emphasizing this fact, like, including students. They are the stakeholders. My question may be something to be thought, really thought very closely about, which is how exactly you're going to form that committee? Kind of like parents, I mean, how would you select members of that committee? Right? I don't know. I mean, I don't have the answer. I mean, it's something maybe that should be considered very, very, very closely. Because when you select like a student on that committee, does he or she represent everybody? Okay? Are you going to select two students with opposing views? Are you going to select two parents with opposing views? We'd like that committee to be unbiased. I mean, especially that we're talking about DEI here, and you know how divided the society is in some parts of that DEI general question. That's my comment number one. So it's a process like John mentioned. Process is very important. The last thing, I mean, here, all I have is two points. My second point is math. I think you, everybody remembers last year. I do not remember whether I abstained or did not support the goals of the superintendent last year. And mainly, it was based on the lack of mentioning math at all, altogether. And I see now, in a second year in a row, math is not mentioned. Last year, I mean, Terry did say, kind of started, I still remember his words. He said like, "I am a math person." And he gave us a good reason. I wasn't 100% convinced that math shouldn't have been like one of the goals. And now we're talking about second year in a row, I did not see math. I did see science. I did see reading, but I did not see math.
Thank you, Bass.
John, I'll jump in on your suggestion. I think, seeing who you have teed up, Mark Schneider with NISBA and your training topics, I think he would better tool us to field this conversation at a later date. I think we can know that this is coming and use this as a springboard in that training to flush out any ideas, thoughts or concerns we may have. And we may better tool us to have a more fruitful conversation at a later date. My opinion. I'm kind of agreeing with your thought process.
Thanks, Louis. Christian?
I don't want to get into the substance of any of the goals, because I think that would be a very long conversation. So I just want to make a point about, you know, the form and what would be useful. And I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the acronym SMART that's usually used for organizational goals. That goals should be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. Did I get them all?
You did.
Okay. And particularly, what I'm concerned about is I look at these goals and I wouldn't know how to measure them. In a sense, like, what does success look like and things of that sort. And so I think as we develop these goals, we should think about perhaps putting them in a form, you know, using that as a standard to kind of, in a sense, not necessarily change any of the substance of them, but in ways that people have metrics. And looking historically through some of the goals we've had in the past, for example, in 2019, 2020, they at least reference metrics alongside the goals. And the second concern is just time-bound, because some of these goals have been our goals now for two or three years. And so the question is having a time where we think we can achieve it, which does help us discuss them and whether we're getting closer or farther away from where we want to be. And so as we develop them, I think that might be useful to have in mind.
Thank you, Christian. As I was looking down at you, I noticed Dr. Harrington there at the table. Welcome, by the way. Nice to see you here this evening. Yeah, in terms of goals, I think, Christian, you're right in terms of that acronym. And my take, just to have a dialogue about it, is when I look at what Terry has just put on paper and shared with us, I see that not as goals, but objectives. And there's a difference between an objective, which is, this is where I see us going, versus a goal, which is, as you said, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. So I do think we have some opportunities to improve how linguistically we talk about things, I think. And I look forward to some help from NISBA on that come the retreat. Anyone else with... Christine, yes?
So all that you're saying, everyone around goals and the semantics around whether they're goals or objectives, you know, businesses get caught up in this all the time. I think it would be important for us to establish directionally, are we going in the right direction? And if somebody wants to see something like math, what is the evidence that says that should be in our goals for the year? So that's where I would like, not necessarily today to take the conversation, but I think in general, are we directionally committed to what's here? We can fine-tune and we can come up with what success looks like. And then if someone in the board feels like we're missing something, I think we should come with either, you know, the data or the ancillary data that says, you know, this is important and we should really focus on this as well. Because I want to make sure we're putting all our energy behind the right things to make the biggest impact.
Thank you, Christine. Well said. Brendan?
I want to just underscore your idea before and Louis's suggestion, just that we don't end up having the same conversation twice. Yeah, I think that it's, and maybe it'll end up setting a precedent for how we deal with the goals, since it kind of falls into that retreat calendar. And it's not like we're pushing back the adoption date. We're just pushing back the discussion a week when we have more context. So I think that's a good idea and we should do it. And I think we'll end up having a better conversation next Monday anyway, because of it.
Thank you. Richard?
So I think it was two weeks now I went up to Albany for the Leadership and Education Event. It was hosted by NISBA. A lot of these, a lot of topics were brought up, including DEI. I think I gained a lot of information from it. I'd be happy to share that, the content material with you. And I think, I agree that waiting until we have our retreat and allow NISBA representatives to share with the entire board these similar topics and procedures and ideas would allow us to have a better discussion. And like I said, I'd be happy to share those materials with you, maybe during the retreat or beforehand. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Since we mentioned the retreat, maybe that's a good segue to my update. And with that, so our retreat is next Monday, the 21st. Five o'clock, I believe, is the start date. And Mark Schneider will be our facilitator for that. Will be undergoing some training. Will be undergoing some relationship exercises. And we'll also be reviewing the results of the survey that everyone participated in earlier in the summer. So that should be a jam-packed evening of discussion. I look forward to it. The, what I wanted to talk about and see if we got consensus on at this juncture is off the laundry list that Mark provided, I suggested basically three main areas of training to focus on, trying to tailor it to the things that we may need. I specifically said roles and responsibilities, not just of the board itself, but also Terry and our relationship with Terry and his staff. There's a whole laundry list of things that I included under roles and responsibilities, including internal, external communications, the role of hiring staff, that is, the board's role in the hiring of staff, as well as the board's self-evaluation. So I'm just looking back and forth just to see if I can get some north-south or east-west. Does that seem like a reasonable set of things to have Mark help us with? The roles and responsibilities? Yeah? Okay, great. So that takes us to what I think is really important for any team, and that's to have trust and understanding with the participants, where we come from, what motivates us and what our values are. So he's going to help us with that if we want him to. I think it would be extraordinary for us to do that. Plus, since we have three new board members, that it would be great for them to share their experience. I know six of us have been around each other for a while, so we kind of know each other fairly well. But I think it would be good for all of us to go through that exercise and have Mark lead us through that. And again, I'm looking for north-south or east-west. I'm getting a lot of north-south and thumbs up, so. And then the last thing, kind of dovetails with exactly what Terry was mentioning as part of his vision for his goals, was diversity, equity and inclusion. And tackling it from, okay, what's the board's role in all this? And so Mark, as I understand it, has a lot of materials on it. NISBA has been very, I don't want to say cutting-edge, because I don't think you're cutting-edge in this space, but very helpful in structuring and providing guidance as it pertains to this, especially from a board perspective. So that would be the third thing. And I'm getting some north-south, so I think we're... And I'll just throw it, is there anything else? Because I think we could probably fit something else. And if you don't see it or have it off the top of your head, if you could let me know tomorrow, just in an email, I'll be able to coordinate with Mark specifically on that, so we could make the best use of our collective time and serve the district in the year ahead. Okay? Seem fair? Wonderful. So that's the retreat. The second thing I want to talk about real quick is finance. And I don't see Harvey, but he originally, or earlier in the week, put out... I know he's there. I just couldn't see him. I don't like this, this is more like a panel than a helpful board configuration. But that's going to change here shortly, so we'll just have to deal with it for now. The, Harvey worked with an underwriter over the summer and issued a bank anticipatory note to support the capital project. This is step one of a many-step process that eventually will lead to the full capital bond that the community supported two years ago. I just wanted to make you all aware that that actually was done. It was executed. Those monies have been received. And as I understand it, they're being safe-kept right now and earning interest in our account with our... I'm looking at Harvey. Can't, what's the name, the New York?
It's called Night Class?
Night Class, thank you. Which pays a very competitive interest rate on it. So there's good news on that front. On the legal side, I want you all to be aware that since the last meeting, I did execute the document of retention with the Honeywell Group. I've been talking with Jeff. We're looking for a date to have him come in. We wanted to do it sooner rather than later, which I think was the view, consensus view of the board at that time, at that first meeting. I hope to have it by the September meeting, the first meeting. I'm going to have to talk to Terry. I have a conflict now on the 7th. I just found out as I was flying in this afternoon. So I'm not going to be at the board meeting. We may have to push that meeting. Stay tuned on that. The 7th, September 7th meeting is, if we can get Jeff to agree on a date, I'd rather have one meeting with an executive session with Jeff and then the board meeting as opposed to having two different nights, one with Jeff, because I want to be there for sure when Jeff makes his presentation and the like. So stay tuned on that. We may need some flexibility there. Brendan?
What would he be presenting?
So there are a number of things that have surfaced over the course of the summer pertaining to some legal actions that have been taken against the district. There were also some questions that board members had about his performance, that we want to have an opportunity to have that dialogue with him. So it's basically, like all things, a recap of '22, '23 school year as it pertains from a legal perspective. And then what are the legal pertinent issues currently? And what are possible or pending in the wheelhouse?
You mentioned questions about the performance. How were those raised?
I understand that at the last meeting, there was a discussion of RFP and the like.
So I just wanted to clarify, it's in reference to that conversation?
Correct. All right, any other things, questions as pertains to that? I covered the possible slippage of our next board meeting date. We'll get back to you on that for sure. And that covers my update. All right. So that then takes us to, I believe, the consent agenda. And are there any items that a board member would wish to remove currently from the consent agenda to discuss separately at this time? Number 22. Thank you, Bass. Any others?
Number 19, please.
Okay. No others? Very good. So we have a list here of items 1 through 18. 20 and 21. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. All right, item 19. Let me catch up, sorry. Adoption of the Emergency Remote Instruction Plan. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Thank you, Richard. Go ahead. Yeah, thank you. So I think it's a very simple question, more of a clarifying question. And it was brought up in the superintendent goals. So it says in the Emergency Remote Instruction Plan that the Cornwall Central School District has transitioned to a one-to-one computing device district as of September 1st, 2023. And this means that every student in our school district has access to a Chromebook, grades 1 through 12, and an iPad for our kindergartners. So my question is, does one-to-one in the context in Cornwall mean that all students have a computer in school, a personal computer in school that they also bring home?
So it's a layered answer. Our kindergartners are not going to be taking the iPads home and our youngest students will not. So right now, at the elementary level, it's that there is a computing device for each and every elementary student. At the middle school and high school levels, this means that there's not only a device for every student, but they carry it to and from their home to school. And this is just our initial. It could change in the years to come.
Okay.
'Cause I thought, just from, you know, research, that one-to-one implies that each student would have a computer at home and have access to one to be brought home as well.
Yes, we believe you can do just that. So if there's enough devices in each and every building for our students, we can easily implement a process for them to take said devices home.
Okay. Thank you.
Kindergarten for age-appropriate, and this is what's feedback from our teachers. They utilize iPads, which is much more familiar to them.
Intuitive, too.
Mm-hmm. Correct. All elementary devices will stay in the classroom.
Got it. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So adoption of the Emergency Remote Instruction Plan. We've moved it, we've seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed? So moved. Okay. Item number twenty-two, Tax Levy Resolution. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Discussion. Bass?
Yeah, thanks, John. My point is just like, for the benefit of everybody, especially the taxpayers, if we can have, maybe Harvey explain the numbers a little bit for everybody. You know, mention that we approved a school budget of eighty-seven million, and the table showing our numbers compared, like, Cornwall proper to New Windsor, Woodbury, and the total levy. Just an explanation of the numbers for the benefit of everybody, I think. That's all.
Harvey, is that clear? Do you think you could go over that for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So, as you know, we are, as a school district, we're comprised of three different municipalities. The biggest being Cornwall. Then comes New Windsor, and we have, as was mentioned earlier, we have a small piece of Woodbury. The actual tax levy itself that we approve includes the tax, the tax levy for the public library as well. They do not have a means, and legally, we are responsible to put that levy on our tax bills and then remit it to them as we collect for them. The, the breakout for the, each municipality in terms of how much gets levied onto each is based on the assessed values within each township. We do not determine that. That is given to us. We just have to accept that we have no say in it. And it's from that information that we use in our calculation to come up with the amount that each municipality does get charged.
Bass, is that good? Yep. Thank you, Harvey. All right. Any other discussion? None? All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? All right. So moved. Public service announcement for Harvey. As a result of this passing, he has some documents that require each of our signatures. So before you go home tonight, please, the document's gonna find its way across, but please make sure that you sign it before going home. All right? Great. Thank you. So that takes us to the new business section of our agenda. Discussion of Board Committees. First, I, I wanna thank those who have reached out to me and expressed interest on serving on various committees. I, I appreciate that information. It should make, hopefully, this evening go a little bit quicker. But before we start talking about who's on what committee, I'd, I'd like to take a step back and talk about our current committee structure. And just as a recap, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven committees currently, consisting of audit, communications, facilities, new member handbook, policy, scholarship, and visitation. Those are the current standing committees of our board. Does anyone have an add or a deletion that they would like to propose?
John? John, as I emailed you earlier about a temporary one-year committee to examine and look at the Code of Conduct, or not for this coming academic year, but for the following academic year. And I don't know if that means a committee, or that should be something under the policy committee, but I would recommend that.
Thank you, Christian. Anyone else? No? Okay. I, I have an add that I would like to suggest. And that is a strategic formation process or formulation process of committee. I don't know if that's best as a committee. It, it wouldn't be a permanent standing committee. It's, it's, to jumpstart what I think would be really helpful for the district is taking all these pockets of, of information that we have and looking to consolidate it into somewhat of a unified strategy, which then would become, I think, a source document for, for all of us and the community to be able to refer to when things kind of get cloudy or somewhat gray. Kind of like our, our gospel, when in doubt, what does this, what does the current strategy document say? If we had one, I think a lot of the potential misunderstandings that we have, as well as the lack of transparency or, or claims of lack of transparency, could be taken care of if we had a, a document that we could refer to. But before we have a document, and this doesn't grow on trees, unfortunately, I think we would need to steward the process along to develop what that process would look like before we start getting into the, the nuts and bolts of the document itself. And so the first step is, in that, is forming a task force or a committee, in my view, that would look to actually build out what that process would look like, what the components of the strategy would also entail, as well as what type of, of, of feedback from what constituencies would that strategy formulation or build-out consist of. When I think of, of all the stakeholders, I think they would all have a role to play in that, which means that there would be probably some engagement, similar to maybe what we've seen at the communications forums that we've held, but more importantly, specifically designed on surveys. Now, I can tell you that, that NISBA also performs this service, so Mark can provide additional information as it pertains to what he's seen in other districts. But having some type of a, a source document like that, I think would, would be quite helpful, especially as we try to move forward and elevate the district to, to greater heights. I'll just throw that out.
You mentioned, I think part of my struggle with this is just trying to imagine what the deliverable is, what a, a strategy document even is. And so you mentioned that Mark from NISBA has experience with this in other districts, so he would be able to provide to us what this has looked like in other districts in its final form?
Correct. Correct. And, and there are, and Terry and I have talked about this before, that there are other districts, and I think Terry's actually been part of it. This, this is not something that someone can do in a year. It, it, it takes a lot of effort and thought. And if you think well about it, it will be a, a, a workable, useful document. If, if you don't put the, the legwork in, then it may just be a piece of paper that never, no one ever looks at. And getting help from outside, I think, will, will go a long way. Many districts that I've talked to, and I think Terry has been a part of, have actually engaged outside facilitators to help shepherd the process for them in that. But more, more on that. I think, I think, though, from our perspective, is this a worthwhile endeavor? It's something that, do we wanna pursue? That's, I think that's the question for the board tonight.
Well, I, I would, I would suggest, I mean, for my own sake, I would wanna hear from Mark or somebody who can provide to us a little more specifics as to what it would be. I, I just can't have a, an informed discussion, nor do I think any, anyone else can unless they really know what this is. I mean, you're asking, you know, is it worth the commitment? The "it" is still unclear, so I, I would be more comfortable to have.
Real simple.
I would, I would be more comfortable to, to have that presentation from Mark and then continue that discussion.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that view. I, I think the "it" is having a strategy that is documented and articulated. It's that, it's that, it's that simple. I don't wanna make it too complicated because it touches on a lot of things.
That could be one page or a hundred pages. You know, I just, I wanna get a, a better sense on the deliverable. That's all.
So I, in, in the grand scheme of, of how it affects the lives of the kids in the classroom, eventually, it is able to be referred to by the teachers, so they understand how the goals that Terry just articulated affect them in their daily lives and, and how they're providing instruction. It basically is just a sheet of music, if you will, that can consist of many pages that make sure that we're all on the same sheet and all working, rowing together, as opposed to maybe, you know, somebody rowing this way and another person running that way. But, but I understand that there is great opportunity for more discussion on it, Brendan, but I think it's really that simple. And this would be just the first step of pursuing that process. At the end of the formulation process, if the team that worked it would recommend to the full board, hey, it's too hard. You can't do it. Or it's too cost-prohibitive. We can't do it because, you know, consultants get paid good money.
John, what if we?
That would be the, that would be the outcome. But I don't think we get to that recommendation until we actually launch and actually form a group to consider that. Is that something we can do?
Yeah. Yeah. Fold that into your previous idea of using, using Mr. Schneider at the retreat and make this an agenda item or, or retreat, put a bullet here that says, you know, this, this committee, let's, let's see what he can show us that is a deliverable and, and his experience, what is, what are pros and cons of it? And, and, you know, maybe he can float it, again, in that, in that training process and, and help us better, you know, understand the nuts and bolts of it such that. And it's not something we have to land tonight. If it's such, such a nebulous thing that needs to get funneled in, it's gonna take time to do. You know, certainly if it was next meeting or the one after that this really gained momentum, that's okay. You know, just as long as it's launched properly and correctly, and everybody has a full understanding. And again, maybe, maybe Mark can give us all that. That'd be great. My thoughts.
Thanks, Lewis. Christian? Sorry.
I'm generally in favor of having a strategy document because I think that's useful. I think we can talk about the specifics of what that is. But I think it does provide stability, and it does coordinate across time because many things, I think, a school district wants to do are not year-to-year. And it's good to have, whether it's basing in Chromebooks one-to-one, whether it is developing a reading program, whether it's develop, uh, something, for example, UPK, it's good to have, let's say, benchmarks to aim at over time.
Thanks, Christian. Anyone else?
Just for consideration, in addition to that, not to necessarily decide tonight, but to float the idea of a DE&amp;I committee based on our conversation with Mark, et cetera.
Thank you, Christine. Okay. So that would take us to, actually, no. Question for, for Louis on the scholarship committee. That's your baby. It was a great idea.
Okay.
It's, 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 it's well on its way. We've had some awesome students awarded the, the board scholarship. Is this committee meeting, does it need to meet? Can we, is it, is it useful for our purposes? Or could we allocate other people to, to pursue other things at this point?
You can probably strike it as a committee because the committee was founded and, and utilized to put the structure to the, to the scholarship. It's not met. There is no true scholarship committee that meets. If there's an evolution of the document that we choose, we can certainly put a team together. You wanna establish a steward for it, something that just monitors it and keep it, and, you know, make sure it keeps up on communication with Mr. DeBolt and, and, you know, collects, make sure that, you know, the, the funds are supplied. We can certainly do that. And, you know, nix the idea of it's, of a committee for it. I don't know if that's, I object to that. Or the team, we all, you know? So for the record, we didn't meet last year at all.
To be a hard committee, not standing committee.
As needed.
Okay. I'm okay with all that.
All right. So, so why don't we do this? Because I think we've had some really good ads that have been proposed. And I do think it would be helpful to have Mark Schneider provide some background to the board, not just on the strategy aspect, but, but the diversity committee. And it seems like we're gonna flesh out, 'cause we don't wanna have to, to compete, as it were, but we wanna to support. And so how that works with Terry's initiatives that he's articulated or proposed tonight, I think we'll just continue to work on that. But let's put that as an earmarker. The following committees to consider for this year will decide at a later date. I have written down a diversity, inclusion, and equity committee. I've also put down a Code of Conduct Committee 'cause that's what Christian mentioned, and the Strategy Formulation Process Committee. So we're, we'll noodle that around some more before we figure out if they're worth pursuing or not. So let's get back to the standing committees, then, that I think we're all in agreement. So, so first is the Audit Committee. Let me tell you who has responded to me so far and expressed their interest, and I will ask if there's anyone else that is interested. There are, by tradition, committees that consist of anywhere from two to four. We, we limit the number of board members to any committee to, to four max. I think there's some concerns that five might represent a quorum of the full board, so nobody wants to go down that road. So, so I don't think we have to have four members of every committee, but I think three would be helpful. And currently, for the Audit Committee, I have Jim and Christian expressing their interest in volunteering. Anyone else wanna be part of that, that forum?
Can I just clarify the process here, John?
Yeah.
So?
Yeah, yeah.
You wanna select the members of the standing committees tonight?
Uh, yes, that's what we said last time.
Okay. So people have been emailing you, because I, I emailed you a few weeks ago asking you to clarify this process, to see if we would need to email you our preferences prior to this meeting. The last meeting, we said that we would actually discuss it at this meeting and make our final choices. Or at least put in, put in our.
And that's what, and that's what we're doing.
Hold on.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
'Cause I have a suggestion to make, 'cause I think there's other considerations. So, I think, generally speaking, it's gonna be easier for people to make decisions on what committees they wanna be part of because if, once we have the discussion on some of these other committees, Instructional Technology Committee, Health, Safety, and Security, Professional Learning Plan Committee. The way I make these decisions is based on priorities, but also how much time do I have? So if I know where everything stands on those other committees, I can, I think, more clearly make a decision on which committees I wanna sign up for here. This is why I emailed that, because I wanted to know when you were expecting this information. I, I didn't hear a response from you. So my suggestion is either we fold this into one large discussion so we can make all of our committee commitments at the same time, or if we only plan on making these standing committees. at the same time, or if we only plan on making these standing committees tonight and then we just discuss the other ones, perhaps we push that back.
So let me clarify, yeah. So the goal that I think's been articulated is all the board committees and possible representative assignments, we're going to try to resolve this evening and basically have it approved by all of us, right? Get to some level of consensus. At the time, at the last meeting, I encouraged people to reach out and discuss, and people actually have reached out and asked to serve on various committees. That doesn't mean they're on the committees. It just means they reached out and expressed their desire ahead of this meeting. Everyone tonight has their prerogative and hopefully their ability to express what they'd like. And I want to make sure that everyone is able to serve the district on the committee or working group or outside agency as they would like. So that's the process. I understand that for you, it would be helpful if we do it a different way and express, I guess, your notion would be for all the, just go individually and take count of what everyone's individual dream sheet would be.
No, no, no.
I would prefer just to organize it. Well, I'm going to go through them all. I'm going to do the standing committees first because I think the standing committees, from my perspective, have the most priority and probably the most time required and hopefully the most impact because those are committees that come to the board with a recommendation for action. The other representative assignments are kind of the board's eyes and ears as well as providing feedback, whether it be at the state level or at the county level or at the district level in the various measures. So I don't know if I feel compelled based just on you highlighting your preference, but if others want to follow suit, I'm happy to deviate from what I was planning to do, which is go by committee, committee in order as they're listed. So I'll throw it up to anyone else to-
And again, just to clarify what my, the idea is, the instructional technology committee, health, safety, and security committee, professional learning committee, we just fold them into this conversation. Because I may be thinking, well, I want to sign up for two committees over here because I would like to serve on one of the committees over here. But once we get to this discussion, right, because it's a separate item, if you say, well, it's full, there's no room on this committee, well, now I'm on one less committee than I would have planned on being, where we just do it as one conversation instead of two different items.
Six of one, half dozen of another, Brendan. I'm sorry, your point's being lost on me, but if others want to support that, I'm happy to entertain it. I'm not a dictator. I want the will of the board to kind of be heard and followed. So, Christian?
I think it would be just helpful just to get a draft and allocate people, and then we can always revise it. And people can say, well, you know, can I get off this one on this one? I don't think we're finalizing any committee first and then finalizing a second committee. And I think that's what Brendan is saying, is that the instructional technology, the professional learning are part of, you know, the whole thing. So I think the point is that instead of just doing standing committees separate, to have, basically treat this as literally one whole universe of assignments.
John, thank you. Thank you for that, Christian. Bass?
Yeah, my comment is probably very close to what Chris just mentioned. Let's go ahead with your plan, John, of kind of appointing the seven. I know, we thought like we take out scholarships, so but like six, appoint the members, three or four, and then when we move on to the district-wide appointment, the person who'd like to be there, would you take it on top of your appointment, previous appointment, or you withdraw one of the main six in order to add your position on the district-wide committee? I think that compromise for everybody.
Thanks, Bass. And Louis?
I don't specifically hear it as the district-wide committees are the hang-up here because they've existed, they're always there. It's just, do you want to be part of it or not? I think it's the proposed new committees that we don't know just what their involvement may or may not be. If we decide hypothetically to, yes, we all agree that A, B, and C, I said A, B, and C, I have the DEI and code of conduct committee floated in mind, if we agree that all three are viable committees and we institute them, that may change. Well, wait a second, I can't be on communications because it's going to occupy too much of my time. I would prefer to really be on the DEI committee, for example. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
You know, if we decide on A through F tonight, A through G tonight, and then we go through A through C at a different night, it's just two conversations as opposed to one because we don't know what A, B, and C of the proposed new committees are going to entail, I think.
Louis, that's a great point. I mean, we have things that are tangible in front of us, and the others are like draft choices that may or may not be named.
Let's do the solid six now, yeah.
Right? So like all things, I think the board will be able to, as the world evolves and our understanding of maybe, or our interests or our desires to have these other committees added unfold, we can go back and look at that. The issue that I'm concerned about, and that's why I'm trying to stay focused on what we have in front of us, is that I think there are a number of things that are out there that having a committee in place and meeting before our next board meeting would be quite helpful. For instance, public comments. We have a policy committee. We've had a desire to try to work on how we engage the public and continue the good work that happened last year in becoming a little bit less rigid and more flexible in the dialogue that we have with the public. We're not going to be able to do that unless we have a policy committee and that policy meets hopefully for the next meeting so we can have a discussion about what they're working on. Another committee that comes up, facilities. We have all these projects that are going on, but we don't have a facilities committee to kind of help the board kind of understand what's going on. Well, if we had that facilities committee established, hopefully those participants could be meeting prior to the next meeting so that they can have pertinent information and questions answered by the administration so that when we meet again in September, we're, I don't know if we're ahead of the game, but we're at least on course or on track as opposed to starting behind. And I will tell you that I've learned in life, if you get behind, you get left out. And I don't want to be left out. And I don't want us to start the year off on the wrong foot. So I appreciate the desire to be somewhat flexible. And Brendan, if that's your point, that you're worried that the code of conduct or the other committees might interfere, or that the working groups or district-wide committees may interfere with other work on that, I can appreciate that. I know people are very busy, but they're, the process that I would like to pursue is we're going to go committee by committee. And in the end, if you want to start with the one that's most important, it sounds like to you, and others support it, talking about these district-wide committees, we can do that. Would that help?
Yeah, I'm just saying, we've probably spent more time talking. I'm just saying, let's just have one conversation as opposed to separate action items, that's it, for the district-wide committees, just so we can allocate our time.
So, yeah, so, and I thank you for that now, because I think I understand what you're saying. So hopefully at the end of the process, I'll be able to articulate all the committees and all the different assignments that we have here under one big motion and say, all approved.
Perfect.
And not like we're doing committees first and then these other delegates second. No, it's all, it's all on one sheet of paper. I'm just trying to figure out where all the players are going.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so get back to audit. So Jim and Christian have expressed interest. Thank you for stepping up on that. I've also had a community member who was a board member, Nina Ross, who has volunteered. Again, I think she was a part of that committee last year, very valuable with her expertise. So she would be number three. Is there anyone else that would like to be on that audit committee for this year? No? All right. Next, communications committee. Brendan has shepherded this for a long time, and I'm counting on you to shepherd it again.
Hand raised, yeah.
Anyone else for communications? Louis?
I offer my May of Hope, John. I did not email you. You did say that, and I totally missed it.
No, no, no.
I missed it.
Just to clarify, you did not have to do it.
You can certainly put me on the communications list.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
You can put me on that.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone? Okay. Facilities committee. Louis?
I'll take on that.
Thank you. I have Jim down. He expressed the interest to me on that. And I believe Carl has also expressed interest. And I say also, I think, I've been checking emails sporadically as I've been in Indiana now for a while, and now I'm back here. So I apologize to all that I owe an email to. I've read them. I just may have not responded to them yet. So Carl, did I have that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
John, you can pencil me as the chair if you-
I think I didn't pencil you. I think I engraved you, your name on that. Thank you. Fantastic. New member handbook. This is a labor of love.
Wish Margaret was here to tell us what this entailed because she was the one that always did it.
I, we said we wanted this committee still, and why don't we do this? We've had three new members who have gone through the process. I'll just hold a very informal poll. In terms of the onboarding that you received, was the new member handbook redundant to the official training that you received by the state?
And the NISBA new board member handbook as well.
Okay. So redundant, yes.
No, I'm sorry.
Christine, go.
The handbook part that's just in the backend is the same stuff that we get from the state and from the training. The stuff on the front end that has points of contact and committees and, you know, our timeline for things is somewhat helpful, but I don't think it needs a committee. I think Linda updated it, thank you. You know, I mean, because I saw the old one and then got hers today. So I don't want to put work on Linda, but I think it's a matter of just compiling that front page or pages. I don't know if Carl and Christian would agree, but that was really the only difference.
Okay, fantastic. So why don't we do this? I-
Put that in the same ship as the scholarship committee?
I was going to say, let's let that one sound like it's served its purpose and now just needs to be updated with names and numbers and the like going forward.
I'm sorry to throw up, John.
Yeah.
And maybe with a caveat that says, hey, listen, every year, we'll visit this again. This is our roots, and do we feel like we need it? And if we do, you have that same words to the same new members that are next year potentially. Hey, what are your guys' thoughts? Wow, it was weak. Well, you know what? Now we need to talk about it.
So I like that idea. So maybe we have these standing committees, and then we have these possible, what we'd call, ad hoc committees. And this might be a recurring as-needed committee as we go forward. So thank you for that, Louis. All right, making progress. Policy committee. So I've had the following folks express interest. Jim has expressed interest, Christian has expressed interest, Bass, and Richard. Is there anyone else?
I was also interested in policy.
Okay, Brendan. So that gives us-
I am as well.
Oh, Christine, too. Good. This is, we should have such problems, right? So we have six, and then we have a choice. We could do this as a standing committee or a committee of the whole, which is all the board participate in it, or we can whittle this down to a manageable number of four. And I'm willing or happy to do either. I think it would be better to whittle the number down to four. And as a result, I would ask, is there anyone that would, upon seeing those who are interested in it, be willing to possibly step aside and move on to something else?
I have, I mean, let me share my feelings, if you want.
Sure, Bass.
I served last year on this committee. I was very interested in it. And you go back to the video, what I mentioned in the last meeting, I thought the work is very important. And I mentioned that, like, somebody asked, like, what does it involve? I think you, Christine, asked this question. And it sounded like, you know, usually in every meeting, the bulk of the meeting goes towards what Terry kind of goes through the policies one by one, does kind of share with us, like, they have changes and we debate that. That's the bulk of me. Now, again, that's my personal experience, last year. I can't say, I can't share with everybody. I was the only one on the committee that introduced new policies. And they went like a long way. I mean, all the way to basically our lawyer, right? I mean, our legal, you know, authority, if you want. And they were back and forth a little bit. It's still undone business. I'd like to finish that business. But just to say that I'm genuinely interested in this committee, and I can kind of go further and say, I would be interested in sharing it even this time. Now, I heard that Chris and Christine are, you know, I mean, they like to serve, and thank you for that. Probably if we're talking about six, we need only four. Maybe Chris and Christine can talk among themselves and we get one new member compared to the incumbent members to continue their role. There's, I think, Teresa is not with us anymore. So that's kind of, you see, that can be kind of filled again. And Larry Berger, actually, like, two members of the committee are not with us anymore. So we can fill those two seats. We were only three. We can make them four. And that fourth member, again, maybe between Chris and Christine, we can-
Who would be you and who are you proposing for the other two?
The other two, okay. So we were three. I'm the only one kind of like still there. So we have two vacancies, right? Two vacancies. We have three vacancies. One of those three vacancies, my suggestions should be a new member, and the other two would be kind of, you know, existing members, like incumbent members from the previous year. Members of the board, not-
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
There's currently four incumbent board members that want to be on it.
Got it.
There's currently four, not three.
Okay, let me be kind of very explicit here. I mean, Richard is kind of, is serving his second term, right? He expressed interest in it. Jim is in his, what, third term, expressed in it. So I would say Jim and Richard would be on the board, on that committee. In addition to me, that would leave what? One vacancy. It can be discussed between Chris and Christine to select one of those.
My point is, you're missing Brendan. Brendan wants to be on as well.
You're missing me this year.
Brendan, I missed Brendan.
You're also missing me last year.
So then, no, you were on the committee as the president last year.
I, no, that was one of my only committee membership. It was that and the, well, it was that audit and communication.
Yeah, my assumption was like the president would sit on the committee. I mean, just-
Right.
Well, you're-
So Bass, I don't mean to cut you off. I just moved forward. So we have six who have expressed interest. Bass, you've just made the case why you'd like to be on again.
Okay.
I get that. I'd like to go back to my earlier request. I get that. I'd like to go back to my earlier request, which is, is there anyone at this point willing to say, you know what? Policy, that's okay. Otherwise, we're gonna have to start drawing straws or do something. And I'll just throw it out there. Is there anyone willing to take a step back? And of the six? And the six, just for the avoidance of doubt, Jim, Christian, Bass, Richard, Brendan, Christine. And no one is? Okay. Very good. So in the interest of time, I'm going to just tag that and move on to our next Committee. And that happens to be alphabetically Visitation Committee, of which I have those following members expressing interest. I have Richard and Carl so far. Are there any other members of the Board?
I'm interested for the same reason, like what I just explained about policy. I served last year.
Bass was, yep.
Interested in it.
Got it. Anyone else?
This was, so I had, just to give you, not that you're really asking, but my, goes back to the other conversation. I have three Committees. I want to be on three Committees. And my third, I thought, would either be Visitation or Safety. So you can consider me an alternate and we'll see how the other ones shake out.
So if you express interest, I can put your name down?
Yeah.
And then when we get to the other Committees, we can then look and say, oh, well, I'm overbooked. Or, hey, maybe you're underbooked or whatever. But that's...
Yeah.
So you're just expressing interest, which is fine, and we don't...
But not as much interest?
I get it.
Yeah.
I get it.
It feels like a seven.
It's, you're not a...
Seven or is that an eight?
It's barely making the minimum requirement.
I think it's like a five-point-ish.
John, is it possible to have a rotating spot on the Visitation Committee? In the sense of, we have our main folks who run the Committee, but if there's a spot open, a member of the Board could join the Visitation, but not necessarily be committed to the Committee?
Right. So what's happened in the past is exactly what you've just articulated, Christine. So I would see that continuing in the year ahead. Thank you. Okay. What other? So let's move then to outside organizations. And we have Orange County School Boards. Now, I've had Christine and Carl, I believe, express interest. You did...
I'm the alternate.
You, okay, now you're clarifying. I think you did. At the meeting, yeah, at the meeting. Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay. Next is then the New York State School Boards Association Delegate and Alternate. I have Bass, I believe you've expressed interest in that. Is that right? Yep. Anyone else? Okay, I'm happy to do that as well, I guess, by tradition, I think. Either Brendan went last year...
You're always the alternate, I believe, as the President.
Is that how that works?
That's how it worked last year.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So I'm happy to fulfill that tradition as well. And then that takes us to Legislative Liaison, which would, I believe Jim actually did this last year, if I'm not mistaken. And Brendan, you did it the year...
Maybe two years ago.
Two years prior, previous? Okay. Anyone? Christian? Interested. Good. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on that? Nope. Wonderful. So then that takes us to our District-Wide Committees, of which I'll start with the Health, Safety and Security. I believe last year we had three Board members on that. The year prior, we only had one, if I'm... So there is no rhyme or reason or number, other than I don't think, you know, three's probably the max that we would want. I know these Committees that are run by the District are very large and I think it would, you know, one is probably the optimal number of Board members to participate, but three, I think, worked last year. So anyone for that?
I'll throw in an interest hat on that one.
Okay, thanks Brendan. Anyone else?
I did it last year. I'd be willing to do it again.
I think you can put an interest in hat, the same as Brendan.
Okay.
Whereas that security would fold into that Facilities genre.
So Louis, thank you. So that's interest. Richard, you were on it last year. Are you...
Yeah, I'd be interested in doing it again.
Okay, good, 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 good. Alright, fantastic. The next, I think alphabetically, Instructional Technology Committee. I guess this is an existing Committee. Larry, I believe, has served on, in that capacity as the Board Rep. Is there anyone wishing to follow in Larry's large footsteps? Instructional Technology. No? Okay. I will I will note that everyone is... Richard?
Yeah. If there's nobody else interested, I'd be willing to serve on there and you could...
You're showing interest, that's all.
Yeah, I'll show interest and you can, if somebody else wants to be on the Health and Safety Committee, I'd remove myself from there.
Okay, fair enough. And thank you for that, Richard. And then the Professional Learning Plan Committee. Just as a reminder, earlier this summer, Megan started her work early in working on the, bringing together the team and asked who the Board would want to be part of that process. I reached out. Christian and Christine both expressed interest in that. I think those are great choices. I believe Megan actually was very happy with those volunteers. And because we didn't have a Board meeting and I said it would be just kind of temporary until we could actually endorse it, and seeing if there was anyone else, give them the opportunity, if they're so desired, to be in that. No? Good. Alright.
I mean, I, if there's a need, I'll...
If there's a...
I will join, yeah.
Okay. I think Megan actually asked for only one and we gave her two.
Okay, so...
Because that's, we try to over-deliver here. So thank you, Bass. So good. Alright, so this is what I have, for those who are keeping track. I think Audit Committee, I have Jim, Christian and Nina Ross. That seems to be well to move forward. The Communications Committee, I have Brendan, Louis and Christine. Facilities, Louis, Jim, Carl. Policy, we have six, Jim, Christian, Bass, Richard, Brendan, Christine. We'll have to come back to that. Visitation, we have currently Richard, Carl, Bass, Brendan? Maybe?
More like whisper it.
Whisper. So, yeah.
It's not a hat, it's like a visor.
I think that, yeah. Good, good. Right.
They're like a pawnbroker's visor.
Oh, not an accountant's visor, okay. Accountant's visors are green. I don't know what a pawnbroker's visor is.
I think it's all bought from the same supplier.
Alright, so then, Orange County, Carl and Christine. New York State School Board, Bass and me. Legislative Liaison, Christian. And then for the District-Wide Committees, Brendan, Richard, Louis, great. Richard. John, I'm hesitant. I was going to treat myself similar to, I think, what Brendan tried to do last year, which is as an ex officio to all the Committees. Not be a big Committee member, but, you know, be there as the need might arise. But I'm happy to serve in this capacity, Richard, if that helps you any. I'll let you figure that out. We have two for one slot, as I see it. And then Christian and Christine. Okay, so I think we're great and now we just have to decide how we want to deal with policy. Jim is not here, so I don't have the opportunity to see if he might say it's well-covered. And so, given the late hour, I'm of the opinion that maybe we table this for another day. The Policy Committee, even though I really wanted to get going, other than that, I'd be willing to take ideas for a consensus on how to move this forward. There's lots of different ways, but, yes, Christian?
So I think last year, it's prerogative of the President to decide who's on the Committees and you could exercise that, or you could delegate, you know, in a sense, to a vote of the whole Board. But I think this might be best, I know we're maybe having a meeting before the retreat next week because of some some business that needs to be done before the school year. And perhaps then that one week from today is when we take the vote or have the discussion on the Policy Committee. I think that maybe allows, then Jim?
So is that a motion?
I know that Bass said you might not be there and I know you're interested, so I'm not sure if that works because we're gonna have, Jim is not here tonight, Bass won't be here next week, I believe he said. So I just want to make sure that it's fair to everyone.
So is that a motion? Can I? I like the idea.
I will move and see if I get a second.
Is there a second?
I will move to have the Policy Committee, the Constitution of the Policy Committee tabled until the retreat.
So just for the avoidance of doubt...
Or the meeting that I think will happen before the retreat.
Just for the avoidance of doubt, there will be a special Board meeting to cover new hires that we were unable to do this evening. It will just be a personal action and what Christian is saying is because of a number of factors, we should possibly wait on the policy discussion till that period Monday night as part of that special, that meeting. He's moved it. Is there a second?
I second it. I agree.
Okay. We have a motion. It's been seconded. It's on the floor. All in favor?
It should be discussion, I think, no?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Bass, discussion?
Yeah, discussion. I mean, I don't want anybody to misinterpret, misunderstand what I suggested. I mean, this is, people volunteering to serve on Committees, they're always welcome, more than welcome, right? I mean, I'm saying kind of, you know, there are unfinished business. If we can kind of maintain the structure of that Committee as much as possible. Now, there was a fact, there is a fact, that Larry and Teresa are not with us anymore, so that created two vacancies. My understanding all along, Brendan, was last year we were sitting, I mean, part of the Committee as the Board President, not as a member of the Committee itself. I mean, I was always under that impression. I might be wrong. So, I mean, to say that we were three, not four. But now, you know, we have two new members, two new Board members expressing interest, and again, you're more than welcome. A vote, I think, full Committee vote, I mean, you know, vote for four and we tally, you know, the results and we see what happens.
I think time might allow people to reconsider, you know, like as opposed to putting it to a vote and I just... In my time on the Board, I've never seen anyone vote for...
I've never seen such interest in a Committee.
In a committee, we haven't had that problem, that's right.
And that is...
Mail-in ballot.
That's a very encouraging sign, I think. And the last thing I want to encourage is to take that encouraging sign and make something good bad. And that's why I'm... I like Christian's idea. I think from a timely perspective, we do have some time still. And if we can defer till that moment, it would be, I think, helpful. Anyone else on the discussion side? Bass, thank you for your comments. And I know how you feel about it and I respect that. Anyone else? Christian?
So just as a counterpoint to what Bass said, I think that there's one way to look at this in terms of seniority, people who have served before, have an incumbency. And the other way to look at this is to look at this, that the Policy Committee should be a microcosm of the Committee as a whole, which means it should represent the spectrum of views of the things that might be decided by the Policy Committee. And so I think that, you know, there's a balance of consideration.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's, I think, an experienced consideration. And I think we should, you know, those are maybe, if I had to make a decision, those are the things I would try to balance or take into consideration in making a hard choice because obviously I think all six people are passionate about this by the fact that no one wanted to take a step back, but also that, you know, everyone would bring something to it and therefore we have to make a hard decision because it can't be six people.
Christian, again, if you allow me...
Go ahead, Bass.
John, a balance shouldn't be, I mean, you counter argued with me, I counter argue with you again now, one more time. Balance is not a factor, should not be a factor. It's a Committee that's gonna work hard, put some time behind everything, bring it to the full Board. The balance takes place at the Board level, not at the Committee level.
Alright, well, thank you, Bass. I think the points on that, I think, have been articulated and I think we're ready to move for a vote. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so we're going to defer on the policy. And now, based on our previous work, let me just reiterate the Committee structure that we have worked on this evening and see if we can get a motion on it. For Audit, I have Jim, Christian, Nina Ross, Communications. I have Brendan, Louis and Christine. Facilities, I have Louis, Jim and Carl. Visitation, Richard, Carl, Bass and Brendan. The Board Rep to outside organizations, Orange County School Board, Carl and Christine as the alternate. New York State School Board, I have Bass and myself as the alternate. Legislative Liaison, we have Christian. For the Board Representative to our District-Wide Committees, Health, Safety and Security, Brendan, Richard, Louis. Instructional Technology, Richard. Professional Learning Plan, Christine and Christian. I have one add. And what I would like to do is also put the Chairs of these Committees that we've just articulated, the standing ones. So Facilities, Louis, the Chair. For Communications, Brendan, the Chair. And for Audit, Jim, the Chair. For Visitation, I propose Richard, the Chair. With all that said, can I have a motion?
Some of...
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Thank you. So now, we come to the part where... Oh no, we have more items, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Next is the adoption of the Code of Conduct for the school year 2324. I will take it as the draft and the resolution that states, "Resolved upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Direction Education, does hereby adopt the 2324 Cornwall Central School District Code of Conduct." May I have a motion?
No moves.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I... in light of... I was trying to rack my brain. I mean, it's been a long night. The comments earlier about the dress code, there's a context that I feel confident that was explained to us at some point that I'm now forgetting. So if that can just be offered, I don't know if Megan or Terry are the best ones to tackle that, or just some of the changes that were made.
So every year, we look at what the lived experience is in our buildings, get feedback from staff, both teachers and administrators, to see what tweaks we might need to make. So last year, if you recall, one of the most significant changes to the code was the use of technology, of taking pictures and things of that nature for fights and things of that nature. That was all based on what was occurring at the middle and high school. This year, you'll see some of the changes are really focused on the student dress code and what occurs when there's a DASSA violation, discrimination, harassment, bullying are the two primary focus areas. Just to add some context, this didn't just drop out of the sky. There's a few points that I want to make. This isn't really a, "We give up. We don't want to enforce." That's absolutely ludicrous. That's what we do each and every day. That's why you get the letters on suspensions and what's going on in schools. This is really trying to keep up with current times. So if you go back in history, there were times where females weren't permitted to expose any part of their legs and things of that nature. And I don't want... I don't mean that as a tongue-in-cheek. I mean that as a reality, that times have absolutely changed. When I have female students coming up to me to say, "Why mid-thigh?", or "Why a spaghetti strap?", I can't defend it. Those are things that our own students and our... and parents are asking. So looking at the code and what was taken out and what was added, I just want to kind of reinforce. So one of the most important pieces is that this is a partnership between students and parents and us. While some are saying that it's inappropriate, those are same parents that we live next to one another who are saying it is permissible for their children. So it's a really hard balance to strike because these are all our parents and students. Some of the guardrails that we tried to keep in place is we added a section that said, "A student's dress and appearance shall not include clothing, dress, or appearance which displays a phallic symbol, indoor sexual metaphors, see-through garments, or any garments which expose to cite the private parts of the body." The question was, "Is buttocks?" Yes, absolutely. Any private part that you would cover with undergarments, things of that nature. In reaching... in rereading this, one of the things I would like to add as a revision of my own is to keep the line, based on the comments made today, I think were very valid. Ensure that undergarments are completely covered with outer clothing gets at some of the things that we're trying to make sure that we are providing as guardrails in our schools. But I think all of those things together provide a direction forward, but not being overly restrictive. I asked my wife, I asked... I have a high school or I have a middle school. I was like, "Do we even use the terms halter tops, tube tops, and things of that nature?" Asked a teen, it's not quite... This is, again, we just have to advance to what's happening currently. So just blanketly saying, "No halter tops," you would get some pushback with regards to how do you define that and things of that nature. So it is absolutely not a, "We give up." It's, "We tried to put things in place that we could actually defend," and this is through the eyes of our students and our parents, who have asked very important questions of "Why mid-thigh?", "What's mid-thigh as an appropriate for females in our district?" The other question I've been posed is, "Why can boys wear plunging necklines for their armpits and things of that nature?" I just want to make sure that we're striking that balance of not being overly restrictive of our one segment of our population and not the other. So that is the true intent. We also scoured other policies of other districts, and this is where most districts are moving, is not being a, "You can't wear X, X, Y, and Z," but really talking about what needs to be covered and really that partnership with our parents and students. There's still the caveat that if anything's an interference to the educational process, we can still intervene. Again, that's very subjective. So we're just trying to make sure that we're being current with what's actually happening, not just in schools, but in broader society.
I'd like to make a comment. During this past school year, I had to pick up my son from middle school to a doctor's appointment. I went inside, and I was waiting for him to arrive. I mean, they called them to come and meet me. While I was waiting, students were leaving, classrooms going, I don't know. I mean, cafeteras, I think it was lunch break. And I was looking, I mean, looking to see my son among them, right? Is he coming this way, that way, right? And I felt like strange looking at some very inappropriate female attires. I couldn't do it. I mean, it was a very strange feeling. Goes to what we heard from the community here tonight. So I started looking at the floor, at the ceiling, out the window, and I thought like, "My son's gonna see me. Hey, Dad, you know, I'm here." Very inappropriate. And that was based on the existing... what do we call it? You know, what do you call it?
Dress code.
Dress code. Dress code, that's the word. Based on the existing dress code, it wasn't appropriate. Imagine what's gonna happen now when, again, the community member tonight told us kind of, I can't use better words, less restrictive. I have no problem with the existing dress code. Definitely, I'm not gonna support making it less restrictive.
So I just wanted to just add one other piece. We just really have to be careful with when we say the community as said. Again, the part that I just want to stress is students and appearance and guardians have the primary responsibility for acceptable student dress and appearance. So while we might hear from two members of the community tonight, I have also heard from other members of the community who are saying it's overly restrictive. We had students and a parent come to a board meeting last year that I know you were in attendance, who said, "The student dress code is overly restrictive, overly biased for females." That was our kids. I didn't seek them out. They came to a board meeting. So I just want to be careful with, we heard from the community, because I do have a decent perspective of the emails that I get when there are suspensions, when there are students sent home. I get the responses back from parents and the students. I just want to make sure that we're being careful with...
Yeah. I'm gonna allow myself, again, to say it, maybe in more descriptive fashion. Girls walking look as if they're walking in their underwear, not shorts. Definitely not shorts, underwear. Totally inappropriate, unacceptable.
In your perspective?
So if I could just try to take this discussion to a different level. It seems to me that the purpose of a Code of Conduct, of which the dress code is a subset of, is to establish a standard of behavior that's acceptable for the district. How we go about doing that takes a lot of work, and much to Christian's idea of having a Code of Conduct Committee that looks out into the future as opposed to immediately at the issue that stands before you. Society is changing. However, what is deemed as appropriate, I believe, is for the district to decide, not for society to decide. And that's where we, as a board, come in. And that's where the administrators come in as professionals in this realm in trying to carve out the language in a way that allows what I will call discretion, but still maintains good order and discipline by ensuring that the dress of our students is acceptable to the common good, the common cause. I know that people like bright-line tests. It's convenient. Sometimes those bright-line tests can become your enemy, especially when things change. My question for Terry, just trying to take it to the next level. Is this change... I understand there's a lot of community input that this change is looking to address. Would you characterize this change as actually relaxing or making the dress code of what is appropriate for a Cornwall student laxer?
It's absolutely not more lax. It's, one, clarity, and, two, it's what's defensible. Saying that a female cannot wear spaghetti straps, I have no idea how you defend that to any parent whatsoever. What makes that inappropriate? You will have parents lined up in this auditorium to say, "Why?" The question of mid-thigh indefensible. Where I have no idea... It used to be when I was in school, "Down to your fingertips." And that's ages ago. What makes down to your fingertips appropriate? So I'm really trying to help the district move forward to what's defensible, but then also, how do you still put up the guardrails? Which is why I think what is covered is, "Shall not include clothing or dress which displays a phallic symbol and/or sexual metaphors, see-through garments, any garments which expose to cite the private parts of the body, or undergarments are completely covered with outer clothing." All of those pieces, along with the things that have remained in place, provide us cover. It provides us what things are defensible. It's a clear cut. "I can see your undergarment." It's a clear cut. "You shall not expose a private part of your body," without layering female articles of clothing that are just not permitted in the district. It's clarity and advancing, just like I talked about, the kind of the brief spot in history of what was an appropriate dress for a female 50 years ago would not fly in a Code of Conduct today. That same school board 50 years ago would have said, "Absolutely not. Girls cannot wear that," because in their lens at the time, that would have been inappropriate during that day and age. So it's those two pieces. I can tell you, when I got here, I read the code, and I was looking at exposed midriffs. Megan will tell you, I pressed to say, "Why does the code say one thing?", and what I'm seeing in the high school and middle school, different. And that's when students would start to reach out to me to explain what's unfair about particular dress codes. They were very articulate to say it is female-focused. It's just what you're gonna see is, if you listen to our students and all parents, we have to strike some balance and allow some subjectivity to occur at the building level of making that on-the-spot determination of having that conversation to describe further. So I just think we set ourselves up for failure to say things like, "Mid-thigh, no spaghetti straps, and females cannot wear halter tops, tube tops, and things of that nature." I just think it's not defensible.
Terry, do you think that the... It seems to me that the... one of the issues, and our community members have spotted, have pointed it out, is enforcement as well. And Bass, I mean, based on what you're describing, I don't think it would be acceptable under either the last year's Code of Conduct or this new one. So that, to me, the question becomes enforcement. And what I'm hearing from you, Terry, or what I think I'm hearing, is that clarity will help enforcement. Is that right? I mean, is that where... Has that been one of the driving objectives here?
Yes. It's the... it's the dissonance between what should be... you need to come into my office, call mom or dad, and have them bring you a change of clothing, and then getting those emails back to administrators and to me to say, "Why?" So it's a combination of that. So when a principal is faced with, I've had five parents in a row say, "Why can't my daughter wear..." show her belly button? It's... it becomes a hard administrative task. So we're really trying to provide, "Do not show your private parts. Do not show your undergarments. See-through clothing is unacceptable. Any clothing that endorses drugs, alcohol, tobacco." Those are clearly trying to provide direction for our kids and what's appropriate and not, while also not being overly restrictive and overly biased to female students.
Christian?
I just want to start like, as I... I think there's a lot of things that are imperfect about the Code of Conduct, which is why I suggested the committee. That being said, I just want to say that my intention tonight is to vote for this Code of Conduct and then work on those issues over the year, because at this point, we have a school year coming up, and we need a Code of Conduct. And it's not... no Code of Conduct is perfect, and we need to... I think we can work with the one we have and also commit ourselves to work on these issues going forward. This is not my priority, but I would say, as an educator, my experience is very similar to Mr. Dade's on this, with the issues and striking a balance. And I have been in, had probably about 3,000 students in my career, and I've seen a lot. And I have also had a lot of conversations with students. My general thing is to look at a dress code that the primary purpose of a dress code is the health and safety of the students. Wearing a T-shirt in the middle of a New York winter is a health and safety issue. And I think that should be the core of it. And then, as Mr. Dade said, the interruption of instruction. But I don't think that the dress code should endorse a particular sense of propriety, because when I think, when you start to go into there, you run into issues. But that's on the dress code. I have some concerns about the change in policies about cell phones, mostly because I think they would... they're gonna become a headache as far as enforcement and interfering with our transition to one-to-one. But I think those are things that we can work out, and I don't want to make that the stop. And the second thing is about giving bus drivers the authority to take cell phones from students and to make the determination. I think I'm uncomfortable with having non-district personnel making those judgment calls when they're not defined in the Code of Conduct, and I think that could be a legal issue. And I think it's gonna be a headache. And since there's no parallel policy for inside the school that meets that, I just would like to flag that. And lastly, the clarity on the escalation of discipline for bullying, and then the bullying that is in direct violation of DASSA, was not... What's not clear to me is that DASSA, you go through four stages of bullying and then you slip to the next column, next row on DASSA, and that's then step one or step five. And I think we either can combine those because I think the DASSA is broad enough, but these are minor things, but I think they're things we can work on. And I, as I said, the reason why I think we should have a committee that includes members of the community, the staff, the administration, as well as the board, to revisit this and to make it appropriate for what the reality of our school district is in going forward.
Thank you, Christian. Any, anyone else?
I just, if you don't mind, I don't want to belabor this with the dress code, but I think, part of the other challenges to Terry's point about, I'm sorry, do you want me to stop, John?
No, please.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying moved on.
We're not just talking dress code, we're talking about the whole code.
I know, I understand that, but this is, you know, people came to speak, and I just want to say, I think the challenge also, when you think about like mid thigh, a very tall person has a very different perspective on that, and they can't find clothing that does what we're asking them to do. And these are nuances, but they make it difficult to enforce. And I think that when I really reread this a second time, I think it covers everything that has been brought as a concern. And I think, it doesn't say it here, but it's also, you know, the reasonable person's standard, that if somebody, you know, if an administrator saw something that, you know, we're describing, I would argue you can probably see undergarments through what we've been heard here described. And so that would be something that would fall in the current, you know, iteration of the policy. I just, I know it's a hot button, and so I want to make sure that, you know, folks feel like we're still holding people to a standard of appropriate dress and conduct. We're not saying to just give it away because society has changed.
Thank you for that, Christine. I think that's very important to articulate. And my understanding in talking with Terry and Jim and some others is that the intent is exactly what you just articulated. Now, when it comes to what happens as it unfolds, I think to Christian's point, it's imperfect. And if adjustments need to be made, I'm sure they will be made. When I thought about what is appropriate dress in the 21st century, I don't know if I could articulate it well, other than referring to what I heard about defining pornography, which is, I can't define it, but I'll know it when I see it. And I think that's what we're asking the administrators and the teachers in the classrooms to be doing is when they see it, to be able to say it. And that puts a heavy burden on them because now the discretion, that's for them to figure out. Where before it was, I think, very easy when you have a standard that's articulated. Oh, spaghetti straps, I'm sorry, you're out of compliance, you know, go to the principal's office, whatever. So I think it's tough, it's made tougher by societal influences, but as long as we can have a dress code that preserves the focus of our students' attention on learning, their studies, I think we'll be in good stead. So I think this was a, an attempt. Whether it's successful or not, we'll find out. And if it's not, I'm sure we'll be quite quick to adjust. But, barring any other conversation or comment.
I heard an argument like maybe three, four times tonight.
Say again?
There was an argument made, maybe three times already tonight, and this is kind of, times has changed. Women do not dress like they used to dress in the 30s and 40s. That doesn't mean that, you know, you want to go and exposed, and it does, I mean, the kind of, the policy does say do not expose private parts. Whether it's a man or a woman, everybody understands there's the leg, and at the top of the leg, the buttocks start, correct? I'm trying not to be very kind of, I mean, here, when the short should end somewhere on the leg, do not go and show half of the buttocks. That's what I saw when I went to pick up my son.
Understood, Bass.
Totally unacceptable. Don't tell me that times changed and we don't dress like we used to dress in the 40s and 50s and 60s.
Bass, I hear what you're saying, I agree with your saying. I didn't hear anyone object to what you're saying. I think there's unanimity in what you observed as being inconsistent with what I'll call the Cornwall standard. And hopefully going forward with these novel changes, hopefully it won't occur again. So with that, I'd like to, I think we have a motion and it's second. All in favor of adopting this code of conduct? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
I have Carl and Bass, okay. That's seven to two. Motion passes. Oh, six to, I'm sorry, Jim's not here, thank you. Math, yeah, we need more math. Six to, motion passed, thank you. And good discussion. And I think from an intent perspective, my hope would be as we move forward with this new, or this change, that as the policy were to be challenged, and I know that's what middle schoolers do, they challenge things, that we'll be able to quickly address it.
Terry, putting that one sentence back in. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to the recognition of visitors. I noticed we still have a crowd. Thank you for staying this evening with us. The conversation was getting close to late night TV, I guess. Is there anyone wishing to be heard?
Hello, Rhona Lee Burt, COH. I appreciate the discussion you all had just now. I just want to add to the business of the dress code that it wasn't clear to me where the midriff lies on what's private and what isn't. Everything in the old code suggests that that was inappropriate. And you could call it halter top or tube top, now they call it crop tops. If you want to focus on what's revealed, I would include that. But Terry, I think when he just discussed what he can't defend, included the belly button, so now I'm thinking that's acceptable. And I just, I would have a hard time like defending, you know, boys or girls going to school exposing their midriff as being appropriate for a school setting. I mean, we have to remember that this is like a professional environment for these kids, and we're teaching them how to conduct themselves as professionally as they can, just like you wouldn't go to your job, I mean, most jobs anyway, in a tube top or whatever they're calling them. I don't think we want to send the message to our children that that's appropriate at school. So just to put it out there, I would like maybe some more specificity in what is private and what shouldn't be revealed. And then my other comment has to do with committees, I'm sure it's too late now, but I'd like the board to consider adding an academics committee. I don't see like any systematic assessment of the data which we have. And you all get once a year when state, you know, the previous year's state assessment data is out. And the board, I think, is a little bit caught off guard because they haven't been tracking this. And I think having a committee that's comparing year-to-year academic data to see what the rate of progress is, to see like where the difficulties come up, where the learning loss happens, just would help us target our resources more effectively. So just for the future, I would consider having an academics committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhona. That then takes us to closing comments of the board. And I will start with Carl. Speaking of dress code, Carl, you're taking us to a high standard.
I'm trying, I'm trying. First thing I want to say is, there's a person sitting here who probably never gets recognized, and she is probably the one person that makes this all happen for us. And I know as a new board member, Linda's been awesome. I mean, she does everything. I mean, within seconds it's done. If I call her up, everything is taken care of within seconds. So I wanted to say welcome back and thank you very much for everything, okay? I just wrote down a couple things. I was able to go to my first high school play here the other day with Frozen. Awesome. Can't say enough about it. John Hines, I just wrote a few names down. John Hines was the director produced by Bridget Cardy. We don't, we say how great these things are, but we never mention the people that actually make them happen. And I was just blown away by this play. Denise Carter, the Ireland family, Peter and Dee. Awesome, thank you so much. I mean, you guys did a great job, these kids are phenomenal. How little time they have to put a play together like that and do the work that they did is just unbelievable. So, man, keep that going. And really, John, I had a couple things I wanted to ask you. The attorney, was the attorney supposed to be here tonight? Was that one of the requests?
I understand that was in the future.
Okay.
Not specifically tonight.
Okay. And so while we're on that subject, why couldn't we go out for the RFP that we spoke about at the last meeting? There's not going to, going out for the RFP is not going to put us in any kind of a gap. We're not terminating anybody, we're looking for proposals. I think that's something that we should consider doing. I really feel that this, the fact that this was brought up at the last meeting, I would have thought, unless he had a conflict of, you know, he had another prior engagement or something, I would have thought he would have been here tonight. So I would like to make a motion at some point that we go out for an RFP, for an attorney, and get that moving.
So Carl, I appreciate the comment there. I don't mean to interject, I know it's your time to talk. I do believe that we are making movement
Okay.
towards a discussion with the lawyer that will be, as we mentioned earlier in the evening. And what follows from that, we'll see. If you do have a motion for such things, I'd ask that, let's talk about it before we come to a public setting for that. But, you know, to the degree that there's other things to talk about, there's always that opportunity, especially as it pertains to people or other matters. But I would prefer that to occur in an executive session.
That's fine, but the only thing, the only motion that I'm making and I'm going to keep it out there is that we go for an RFP for attorneys. At least we start the process. I mean, they can turn it down, but it's out there and...
So I appreciate that, Carl. I guess, you know, I will, I will say that when we do new business in that section, that would have been a good place for that.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to hijack the format of our agenda. However, to the degree that you have articulated a motion for that, maybe not during the new business section, during your public comment, is there a second? There's a motion before the board to do a RFP for legal services.
Second.
Is there, there is a second. Okay. I have a motion for RFP. Second, bypassed, discussion?
So I just want to jump in here. I think this is, this is a terrible precedent to set that we would, I think that what you said should be enforced. We should, our agendas should be clear, we should stick to them. I think that you're obviously going through this process yourself, it's not, it's comprehensive. I think when we go into a meeting, that should be the agenda. This is the faith that we put in the president and vice president, and we should follow through on that. Also, just about this in particular, you have articulated, John, earlier in the meeting, next steps on this very issue. I don't see the need to have this motion tonight, there's no urgency. Also, it should be considered the context of our relationship with the law firm. This is a very longstanding relationship, and if this is something that we were even going to pursue, at the very least, we would owe them on a, just a professional and personal level, a discussion first. And so I think for all of those, any of those reasons, I don't think we should pursue this, certainly for all of them.
So just to clarify, an RFP is not a discussion on the services received, as I understand it. We would not be talking about that in this setting if it were. There's no conclusion, as I understand it. It just, I'm trying to entertain this motion and a second and get a discussion going from the board. But we are not, we're not looking to make a change at this juncture. We're entertaining the motion and discussing the motion as it pertains right now. That's the purpose of this, right? So, and I appreciate what you said.
We also had this discussion at the last meeting though, and the conclusion was that we were going to, we were going to take a course of action. And I just don't think that if something doesn't go, you know, a particular way, that we just can't set the precedent that we're just going to keep revisiting, revisiting, and taking new votes on things. Just imagine if this was for any other issue, you know? The next meeting, someone makes a motion again, and we're just continually rehashing the same things.
So I don't know if there was a motion last time or not. I don't believe there was.
It was on, well...
I don't believe there was a motion or a second. And I don't think there was a vote. And I could be wrong with that.
There was no, there was no vote, there was no motion for an RFP. There was, it was an item on the consent agenda to re-up another year with the Honeywell Law Firm. So it was something we voted on. We voted essentially not to do that, not to, I'm sorry, not to go out for an RFP by voting to approve them for another year.
I disagree with that conclusion.
But you mentioned earlier, John, you mentioned earlier in the meeting that you signed the agreement for another year with them, so it's already been executed.
So, a couple things. And not to get technical, but I'll go down this path with you, okay? Because I don't believe by saying, as the board did last meeting, that the appointment of our general counsel meant that we were not doing an RFP. I think that is adding something to that motion or that resolution that did not exist. And I do think you can have one without the other, or you could have both. And if it was the intent of the board to have that, one or the other, either we're doing an RFP or not, we should have had a resolution, a motion, and a vote stating that. I don't believe that's what happened. I believe we had a list of various appointments. They were discussed specific to the general counsel. We also discussed RFP at the same time because it was in that section of the board meeting. But we haven't taken a stance on RFP. And that's, I think, clear to me. And I just throw that back to you, and I'm happy to have a conversation with the other board members on that.
I think fundamentally, John, we are in closing comments, and every board member has the right to create an agenda item and send it to you in a timely fashion. We have a policy that speaks exactly to that. I think to introduce the idea of a motion at this point in a meeting, that all of our agenda items have been met, I don't think it's prudent for this board to entertain it. I think it's prudent to say, yes, it's a valid, it's a valid concern, and it's on the board's radar, right? We talked about it last meeting. You signed the agreement with the law firm. You, you saw, you signed the agreement with the, the law firm to have a, you know, council in place for this coming school year. And I, I recall that our last meeting was, we will visit this at an upcoming board meeting. So it, it's, it's on our radar. And I think, again, I think to use closing comments to introduce something is not a good precedent to set. And, and again, every, every, every board member, every public, every member of the public has the right to ask for an agenda item. And that's the appropriate way to handle what we're trying to do right now or what, what Carl is, is trying to do right now, is introduce it. I think this should be removed. I think it should rescind it.
Thank you, Louis. Hold on, Carl, please. Christian.
So ditto to what Louis said. I, I understand that some emotion was made and someone seconded. So like, to respect the fact that any motion made. But I also think that there's a time and place to do this. And closing comments means that we don't know that it's coming. It doesn't give us enough time to consider and think about what we might vote on. And therefore, I would encourage Carl and Bass, who I think seconded it, to make this motion for new business at the next meeting, if they think it is that important. And then to take a vote on it then. But I don't think the, my, I will not be voting for that motion. I can't speak for anyone else. But my point is that I, for all the reasons I articulated the last meeting, I think there is a process to do this if that is what we want to do. And I would still advise to do it in the sense that we have a year. We need legal representation. We have, I would keep the legal representation we have for this current acad, you know, current school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Anyone else?
John, I just, I need to.
Can I, can I get someone before you?
We have a policy on this. I can read directly from the policy.
So, so before we, hold, please, please. I appreciate reading the policy. At the end of the day, though, we're having a discussion.
Okay.
And so.
I think this is very germane to that discussion.
Very good. But before you do that, the purpose of why I even entertained the idea, I think the points that Louis has made is dead on, right? There's a time and a place for this. This was not the time and the place. Christian's idea was dead on.
I think Carl wants to.
I, I, I'm, I'm sure Carl wants to say, say some stuff. But hold on, hold on, please. I appreciate it. But, but this is all about, it's all about process, right? I am not going to, I will, I will entertain to the point where I can. But if we can come together as a team to a better place as opposed to being divided between, this is what I think should happen and this is what you think, if we all can get to the same place, I'm willing to try to explore that. It may take some time. And trust me, I don't want to be here tonight any, any more than, at this late hour than anyone else. However, that is why, against my intuition of saying that it's not right, because Louis is right, by the way, I said, let's do it as a learning point for us on how we want to conduct ourselves going forward. And that's why it's like a laboratory motion. And I'm sorry for those who have to see it.
So now that I realized that I had actually spoken, I, you know, proposed a motion on closing comments and I wasn't supposed to, which is the learning curve, okay? I will rescind my motion at this meeting.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
And, and we will, we will take this up in a subsequent meeting. I, I promise you that.
Yeah.
Okay? Very good. Thank you so much, Christian.
Yes. We're back.
So just ditto to what Carl said about Frozen. I know many other people went and saw it, so I'm not going to elaborate too much. But it is great to see all the things that, the many different parts of the district who made it possible. Second thing, reading over the, the personnel list, I saw many names that I recognize hired as substitute teachers. And I don't know everyone there, but the ones that I do, I'm really happy that these people will be exposed to our students because I know personally the quality of those people. And I'm just going to tell a quick story in the interest of time that early in my career, when I was a substitute teacher, I worked in upstate New York. And I would go in, very often substitute teachers are forgotten because they're kind of like the temporary people. And an AP would always come to my room, no later than second period. And the first question is, what do you need? And if I said I needed anything, within five minutes, he came to my classroom. And every single day, same thing. And the last day I was there, I asked him, I said, you know, this is not typically how people treat substitute teachers. And what he said was, everyone who comes in contact with our students is important. And it's my job to make sure you have what's necessary. And I hope that we, as a district, will support those people because they're just as important to making sure that our students get the education that they deserve. Thank you.
Louis.
Thank you, John. Just ever so briefly, Lou and Scott, thank you for their, their presentation tonight. And I encourage them to, to keep their nose to the grindstone and keep the push on to open our schools on our first day that's necessary in the, in the greatest capacity possible, possible. And I think they can do it. And, you know, Walter noted his, his folks there. So thank you to those, him and he and his team doing all that they do. Because, you know, again, they are the unsung heroes to a degree, from top to bottom. So thank you for those guys. And everybody enjoy the balance of their summer. And for all the kids that are probably not listening, but enjoy what's left because it's coming.
There's, I think they're sleeping right now.
Yeah, indeed.
Hopefully in bed.
Happy, happy balance of the summer.
Thank you, Louis. Richard.
All right. So I too went to Frozen Junior. And what a phenomenal performance, to say the least. And I won't be long here, echo what Carl and Christian said about it. I think everyone involved did a wonderful job and our students really put on a show. It was a, it was a great performance. Tonight, we had a lot of interesting discussion from our capital project to goals, to committees, code of conduct. This is the kind of collaboration and engagement from the board, the district, and the community that I'd like to see through this whole year. And I want to thank everyone that came out and spoke tonight. And know that what you said has been heard by me. And I want you to continue to come out and be advocates and, and voice your comments, concerns, and opinions on different items. And as we approach this new school year, this is our last board meeting. Well, except for the special board meeting next week and the board retreat before our kids are back in the school. So I want to wish everyone the best of luck. Our students, our teachers, our staff. I hope that we give you a, a great academic, athletic, extracurricular experience that's fair to all and, and great to all. So with that, thank you to our staff, fellow board members, administrators, who work very hard behind the scenes and, and make this all possible. And have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Bass?
Thanks, John. Yeah, very quickly, I want to mention that this is the first year. As a parent, I would not have any of my kids in elementary schools. My youngest is moving to middle school. I can say for everybody attached to the good work that our elementary schools are doing. My kids went to Willow and COH and they enjoyed it in both places. And we enjoyed it as well. As parents, we see exactly kind of what homeworks they give them. You know, the level of, you know, how, 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 shall I say, proficient, I mean, the, the homework would result kind of in the student getting his and her education, top-notch job at our elementary school. And it's kind of a special feeling when you feel like, wow, okay, my youngest now is in middle school. So kudos to our elementary schools. My second point is just kind of, just to let everybody know that Rich and I went to the educational summit in Albany. And the, the majority of the topics were centered around DEI. So it was, again, kind of interesting to see kind of what the speakers were, were saying, were talking about. It is an important topic that everybody's talking about. We just heard from Terry that, I mean, they, we want to expand on that as a goal and involve more stakeholders in it. That being said, it can be very sensitive. And I always advocate, if you want, for going as much as possible with, with the mainstream kind of ideology, not to go to the extremes. That would be to the benefit of everybody. I mean, you create friends, you don't create enemies in a way, inside the school and outside. Another topic that both Richard and I chose to attend, I mean, they were concurrent, kind of like seminars. And we felt that like, two days, and we felt like, wow, both topics, concurrent topics are interesting. Go, what are we going to do? One we chose was about addiction. And the speaker was a commissioner for, I mean, she had like very long kind of job title. She did a, she, she gave a very nice kind of presentation. And I brought a point, I said marijuana is legal, kind of. And she represents the government to fight addiction. At the same time, we're making marijuana kind of easily accessible. Kind of, I mean, it's the same government doing, I mean, playing like the right hand, doesn't know what the left hand is doing. Basically, they're fighting each other. And, and the speaker, I mean, very kind of like professional person. Her credentials were kind of impressive. And she couldn't answer me. The only answer she gives, well, it is legal. Okay? Kind of, I mean, you're fighting another part of your own government in a way. So just to say that, it is not that easy out there. It's very complicated. Bottom line is, access to drugs has been made very easy in this state, something that we have to be very careful with. And sometimes unintentionally, if some parents choose to use products like that, kid doesn't know, pick up a cookie or whatever, bring it to the school. Let's be very careful with that. And I'm sure Terry and his cabinet are doing a great job. Just let's keep our eyes up and do not take anything for granted.
Thanks, Bass. Christine?
So, yeah, just to double down on the Frozen discussion, I've often said, you know, we have regional championship teams, we have state championship teams. And I would put our drama, production, orchestra, band in the same category as state champs. There are not many, I mean, Frozen was amazing. But when I think about how that grows, there are not many productions that have a live orchestra streaming in, right? And so that's really impressive. On the heels of that, I just want to mention that, you know, Mr. Ravinsky recently was a chaperone at a program where, I don't want to, maybe 10 of our students went. It's called American Music Abroad. They traveled to six countries and they sang, played orchestra or band in all these different cities where the locals came out. So it was like an immersion in other countries, but also like a doubling down on their, you know, love of music and the arts. And then I seem to have a theme tonight. I want to give a big shout out. The Dragon mural in the lobby is incredible. And I believe Ellen Kramer did that. And I just, I think now, I'm like, oh, my gosh, there's a stairwell that's empty, there's a bathroom. I mean, it really like brings that area to life. So kudos to Ellen. I don't know who arranged that. But I think it'd be great to see more of that throughout the building.
Brendan.
Thanks, John. Trying to be very brief. I just want to underscore everything that everyone has been saying about Frozen Junior and the arts and drama and particular programs in general. I think if there is one message I want to take out of this or I want to convey from this, it's not just, you know, we need to appreciate our kids, but we need to support the programs and think of ways perhaps to evolve the programs. And that's from not just the funding standpoint, but from an organizational standpoint. I think we are an incredibly lucky district because of the volunteerism that is present in the district. But our component schools have not always, or that volunteerism sometimes is not spread out evenly, you know? So for, for instance, you have the smaller schools, Willow and COH, they might not have the resources because they just don't have as many people, you know, as CES. So it becomes more difficult for them to put on shows. And I just want to make sure that every kid, because these programs are so amazing, because they're so enriching, because the skills that they gain out of them are so transmissible to what they will do in their adult life. I think it is essential that we come up with, or it would be ideal if we allowed, if we came up with resources that allowed every, every kid in this district access to these programs. I know that's still very, a little high level, but I think that there are so many options for getting there. And I think as a board, we should remember this as we get into our budget seasons. And we prioritize these things as much as we prioritize some other extracurriculars. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Brendan. So it's been a long meeting. I really appreciate the dialogue, the input from the community. As they say, the, the, the proof is in the pudding. And these documents that we've approved tonight are, are actually just not pieces of paper that we put in hide, but, but are living, breathing documents that kind of guide our behavior. And to the degree that our behavior is not abiding by the intent or the documents don't go far enough, I, I'm pretty confident that we have the right people in place to, to make those necessary adjustments along the way. Because most of life is iterative as we go. And as we start the, the new school year, I'm sure we'll face challenges, but I know we're up to those challenges. So I want to thank everyone. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Somewhere.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the summer. Please remember to sign Harvey's document before you go home. Or, yeah. Safe home.